It's 12:03, Tuesday, June 20, 2017. We're convened in the city-centered conference room. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube for the City Council, where it will also be available for on-hand viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects. Further, be aware that the microphones can pick up side conversations. We'd like to begin now with the roll call.
John Curtis.
George Stewart.
Kelsey Darklock.
Dave Connect.
Dave Sewell.
Elizabeth Andrew.
Hey, Lynn Buren.
Kim Sanjavel.
Brian Jones.
Les Draken.
And if you'd like to excuse, they're partying. And I had heard that...
I think they're both calling in. Gary wants to join in the day partying, I believe, are both calling in for the work session, and then Gary will be just going to be a conference call for the evening.
Gary's here.
Gary's here, okay. Thank you for all calling in. I believe that Dave already won't be able to come in until 2:00 or somewhere there. So we'll... John, you may as soon as you can try this. It looks like we have a opening prayer that was going to be provided by Councilmember Stewart.
My dear Father, which art in heaven, we thank you for our many blessings. We thank you for this food that has been prepared for our use, that we may have our health and strength that we need. Blessed, my Father, that we might have a productive meeting. We may be charitable one with another and do the city's business in a way that would have us do it. These things, since you just named me, but...
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Appreciate that. It looks like we have one set of minutes to prove today, the June 12 site visit. Are there any concerns or questions about that set of minutes? If there are no objections, then we will take that those minutes away by announcing consent. All right, so the first item on the agenda today is a discussion on Rock Canyon Preservation, where they're showing that this is going to be presented by Eric Davis and George Hanley from Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance.
Ginger, who would love to be here, but last thing she told me was that her granddaughter took higher priority than the Rock Canyon for her, which is saying something. Ginger is one of the most dedicated people I know on this cause. When we talked about acquiring this parcel... So I've passed out just some sheets here that hopefully are helpful. The first one just identifies... I've tried to identify the parcels owned by Provo City in the canyon. I had to guess because the county doesn't show the cliff area, so I guessed a little bit of that. But you'll see highlighted at the bottom the parcel that we're talking about here, which is the acquisition from the Lipti family that the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance helped to make possible, raised funds for this acquisition, and helped the city to purchase that with the idea that it would be preserved in perpetuity. There are a number of ways to do this, but I think the most effective one we've discovered over the last 20 or 30 years is a conservation easement. And I think everyone's familiar with the idea of easements for access to across another person's land. Conservation easement is something that's come up in the last 20 or 30 years, becomes a very popular way of preserving land in its current or native state or imposing restrictions on the landowner that will allow the land to be preserved and conserved for future generations. The way it works is that the landowner will give an interest, a conservation easement interest, to a third party. That it's usually... It has to be a 501(c)(3) or a public agency under this city's law in Utah. And the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance is organized as a 501(c)(3) in the software as well, own property interests. And we're proposing that the alliance be made the interest holder over the easement on this land. It doesn't have to be the alliance, there are other kinds of organizations that could do that. But what makes the alliance the best candidate in my mind is that they are there every day. And the idea of having a conservation easement is that you have somebody who is invested in the conservation interest and is there and can manage it and can be on the spot and can see what's happening and know that the terms of the easement are being upheld. The... As you flip through here, this just shows the canyon mouth area a little bit and with the part that would be affected by the easement. The next page is the master plan, and I think the next presentation is going to be more in detail about that. But the page after that, I think, might be helpful. It shows the master plan as an overlay of the easement area. And what we're proposing, and I would work with... I'm an attorney, and I would work with the council for the city to put together the actual agreement, to make sure it's agreeable to the city. But the idea would be that the land would be... Conservation easement would protect this parcel against any development that's inconsistent with the master plan. And as you look at this, you'll see what the master plan provides for this parcel is really... There are some education trails. There's some switchbacks here in the steep area where there's been some erosion. They're trying to replace that area. But the parcel would be essentially preserved and then restored with native plants, and then there would be these educational trails for kids going through the area. The... It's important to understand that when Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance got involved in this project, it was really with the idea that this land would be preserved, that we were helping the city to purchase this land so it could be preserved and not developed. There are some areas, particularly in this parcel, that could be developed as commercially, as residential land. But we... The reason why we got involved is we didn't want to see that. We wanted to see this preserved for our children and our children's children. And I think the alliance has been very active in raising the funds. They raised and paid for half of the purchase of the property. We also negotiated with the landowners who sold on condition that this land be preserved in this open space. And we've also raised, in addition to that, quite a bit of money towards development of the master plan and other things that could happen there. I don't know if there are any questions.
We really should pause and thank the alliance for their efforts, not only on this parcel, but really the whole canyon. It's pretty amazing that there are these private interests willing to dedicate so much time and energy. I don't know how many hours you've put into this that are...
Well, it appeals in comparison to what Ginger's done. Whatever. You should be thinking when she should be here to receive. And Francine Benyon, who's been down...
I would mention, I think it's important to know that through the process, I think kind of, and maybe it's aspirational and not realistic, I've been hoping to sell the easement because that will generate funds that come back into this area and haven't been successful at that. And at some point, I think we do need to give up on that.
I think so. We have explored that, and changes in the tax law recently have made that more difficult. The parcel is not necessarily big enough to generate a large tax write-off, which would be the way that it would be monetized. And so we're not actively pursuing that.
No. It would have been slick, right?
It would have been very nice.
Not only preserve the land, but to get some income.
Get additional income to help with the development.
I think as the council considers this, there might be some things that we would pass out along those lines of not doing anything that wouldn't serve it, but just making sure we're maximizing the opportunity there. We don't have any specifics for you, but I'm sure one of those issues, this discussion matures a little bit. Clearly, we would be right there with the rest of the alliance and make sure it's preserved, figuring out the best way to do that. It would be on my priority to discuss this way.
And my thought, and I've worked this out with legal counsel and with the city council, but is that the master plan would be an attachment to the easement document. And to say, you know, any development inconsistent with the master plan would have to be approved by the easement holder, which would be the alliance. And that might be a way to do it. And at this point, if you look at the last page, it'll give you an idea of the trails that you see in this area are not new trails. The idea is that there are existing spider web of sort of social trails in this area. And what the master plan hopes to achieve, and at least in this parcel, is to eliminate the social trails and the ad hoc fire pits and direct people onto well-used trails so that the rest of the area can be restored with native wildlife protection, so it's more natural state.
So I thought of this, but I think if I understood what you said correctly, the easement could be written in such a way that it could be sold later on with the Rock Canyon Alliance's blessing. Does that make sense?
It could, yes. Because of that, that's right. So I propose it would be a perpetual easement, but at any time, an easement holder and a property owner, when they agree, can do what they want with the property.
I think that'd be good flexibility, because it'd take both those entities to agree.
It would.
But it would allow that small degree of flexibility if that right thing came along.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Stewart. I think it's noteworthy that the city did this once before. In 1994, the city appropriated $400,000 to buy the property that was going to be developed into condos where the trailhead is today, Rock Canyon Trailhead. Most people have forgotten about that. The city bought that and turned it into a trailhead instead of condos. We wouldn't even be talking today about what we're going to be doing today. And then I've been...
Yeah.
The city has stepped up. I'm certainly supportive of anything that we need to do to...
Who's the mayor back there?
Who's the mayor? Nice guy.
That's absolutely true. We owe, at that, a gratitude, and we feel great gratitude to a generation that preserved it, to hand it down to us, and we feel like we need to preserve it for future generations and enhance it.
I'd like to... I might think still the alliance, it was impressive to see... I think there are 25-plus members of the Rock Canyon Alliance group, and it was impressive to see how quickly the money was raised. Half of the money to purchase that land was the city paid, the other half. And it was... There's not only just an interest for those in the alliance living close wanting to make sure that this area is preserved, but willing to put their money behind it, willing to put their time, you know, giving up their services, their, you know. I just think a lot has gone into preserving this stuff that we're not even aware of. It's very impressive. So I'd like to add my thanks. And also, when you talk about preserving it in perpetuity, I believe that's the... That is the desire of the alliance, to do this in perpetuity. I hate to even put the caveat to it, but it's also David, because that was the purpose, was to preserve it. And so that's...
Well, thank you so much. It's important to ask that it be preserved also. And I think it's important to the alliance that we continue to be seen as a helpful partner to the city. You know, this is one parcel. We're, of course, interested in the whole canyon. We, you know, we're not just interested in preserving a parcel. But we recognize that we have a vested interest in this parcel because of the work that we've done. And we're hopeful that if we are good stewards and cooperative stewards with the city, that if the city's saying, you know what, maybe this is a good way to preserve other parcels owned by the city in the canyon, that they would look to the alliance as a possible easement holder for other parcels. But that's obviously completely within the city's discretion as to how they would want to preserve other parts of the canyon. But we hope to be cooperative with Parks and Rec and the way that this is developed. I think we have a shared vision, but I know that the master plan that we're going to talk about in a minute here is developed jointly with Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance and Parks and Rec Department. And I think that was a fruitful partnership, and we hope that this will be a fruitful partnership for many, many years to come and that we can add value to the infrastructure supplied by the city. I think also, that was one I mentioned, the money was very fast. And that's partly due to the efforts of both the alliance, but I think it's also a testament of how much people here care about these places, that are really restorative and important parts of where we live. Yes.
Question, whether a way that I've heard mentioned of protecting the land would be to trade the land to the Forest Service. Has the alliance considered that, or you have any thoughts on...
Well, that's... Yeah. If you look at the map, you'll see, you know, the Forest Service obviously owns the land to the east of both these parcels and a wide strip of land in between the cliffs area and the parking area. And so it might make sense. But, you know, I like the idea of having local stewards of the land, you know, and having people who are local and who have a personal investment in the land. And the Forest Service does a lot of great work, and I'm grateful for it, but, you know, they've got one office to cover the Wasatch and Cache National Forest now, and they have a limited staff. And those are tax dollars that have to support that federal agency, and they're limited in what they can do. So I think it makes sense to leverage the local private citizens who are personally invested in this effort, to get them involved. And I like the idea that, you know, I think it's much easier for us as a alliance to work with the city. It has been, certainly during Mayor Curtis's administration, it's been very... He's been so helpful and so open and a very skilled negotiator as well, and really has helped us to make this happen. And as long as we have that cooperation with the city, I really like the idea of the citizens in the city working together to preserve this.
I think one of the reasons I kind of liked that there was at least a path is if in 25 years or in 50 years, if all of that is different, if the alliance and the city agreed that the Forest Service would be a better steward. Sure. The path isn't blocked. It just takes both entities agreeing.
Yeah, that's right. And that's really what this is, is it means, you know, with joint interest being held by this private citizens group and by the public city group, there has to be coordination on any of those. And at least it has to this parcel. And that's a little bit of a check and a balance. You know, we don't know what's going to happen in administrations down the road and what kind of economic pressures will come on the city to raise funds by selling off, you know, important parcels of land, or we don't know. But this is a way to ensure that these interests are considered in any kind of decision.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Davis, I just had a question, and it had occurred to me, and I don't know if you've already thought about this, and we could talk about it offline if you could rather, but have you given any thought to whether there would be any tax consequences for those who donated towards the purchase, if the alliance then receives something of value, namely the easement compensation for the donations?
Right. No, I haven't thought about that, but I don't... I'm not concerned about that because this is... The easement would not be to any individual. It would not... And the organization that would hold it is a 501(c)(3), has to act for public purposes, right? So no private... There'd be no private environment to any individual. Yes.
So the master plan here, I can see it happening if you were a part of the city, but I'm not sure how it would happen if you were... If it was enhanced forest service.
Right.
It would have necessarily interest in completing what is drawn out here.
No, I... Yeah, we haven't had a lot of discussions with them, but we certainly haven't sat down with the Forest Service and hired planners and developed the master plan. And that's work that we've done with our folks here, and that's been a very fruitful partnership, I think. And so I don't know that the Forest Service has the staff or the time to dedicate to this little corner of the national forest to do that with us. But, you know, that's... So it's been a very good partnership, I think, to be working with the city.
Any questions? So it says here, we're looking to determine if the council is interested in pursuing conservation easement. Is there any objections to continuing to move in that direction?
With the next step, you can see a draft.
And I want to work with the city attorney, you know, making sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, if you want to move it to council meeting, the best thing would be for a motion, but it may be best to come back to work session with the draft and the easement. And I assume also have to vacate the property in order to grant the easement. Or, well, vacate the easement. So I think, you know, coming back to work session, if we've worked out the details, I think that's probably the best.
Okay. That motion turns back to work session, you want to say, draft of the worrying of the easement.
Okay, we have a motion to that effect from Ms. Sanjavel. Senator, Mr. Connect, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, the motion carries unanimously with Mr. Harding, excuse. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, let's move on to item number two, which is somewhat related. Presentation and discussion of Rock Canyon Trailhead Master Plan, which will be presented by Doug Robbins and Thomas McKenna.
Well, thank you. Today, we have the privilege to report to you the status of the Rock Canyon Master Plan at the trailhead here. As Councilman Stewart mentioned, back in 1995, the original trailhead was established at Rock Canyon, and since that time, we've operated public access to the canyon. There are stands.
Let me off.
Slide around slightly. There we go, slide on. Here we go. Just to get some site orientation, there are several parcels of property back in, I think it was 2015, the Davis property was acquired with 80 acres by the city, and then recently, the Lipti property of almost 20 acres was acquired. Again, those costs were shared between the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance and the city. There's also the Forest Service that owns a significant portion of land in the canyon. So this map kind of gives us some orientation there. The 80 acres that was acquired here is that cliffy type country, river rap canyon, that kind of purple colored properties, the Forest Service. And then the former Lipti property is the green shaded, and the existing Provo City property at the trailhead right there, just to get a little bit of orientation to the site. So once these properties were acquired, we felt like we ought to... The next step would be to get together with our adjacent landowners and partner up on a master plan to help guide and give us a framework for the management of this site going forward. And so we began working with Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance and the Forest Service to develop this master plan concept. There was a lot of elements that went into the plan, and some of these are listed here. A lot of different interest groups that were interested in weighing in on this. We want to make sure that we've collected all of that in this master plan. So we ran through our master planning process that we use within Parks and Recreation Department. We issued a request for proposals, and through that process, project engineering consultants was selected as a consultant to review this master plan and prepare it, and this was initiated in 2016 and evolved. But for this master plan, were some surplus donations that were left over from the purchase of the Lipti property from the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance. And I'd like to introduce Thomas McKenna. He's our project manager, and he's just done a wonderful job in coordinating this effort with the alliance, the Forest Service, and the other interested parties. And he'll get into a little bit more of the design elements with regard to the master
Thanks, Doug. I just want to say first and foremost, it's just been a real pleasure working with the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance. There's been a real synergy that's been felt as we've gone through this master planning process, you know, working together as a committee, and it's been just wonderful, just seeing all the different perspectives and what, you know, working together on developing this master plan. This is just the overall master plan. Just quickly, this area here is Provo City property. This area in between here is Forest Service, and then here is more Provo City property with the Davis property that was purchased. So it's, you know, we'll be working, you know, hand in hand with the Forest Service to implement, you know, parts of this, of this master plan. So first, you know, as mentioned before, with the conservation easement is the social trails, the spider web of trails that are located here. And really, part of this master plan is to develop a trail system, an official trail system that we... That's designated by signage. And these are just examples here along the bottom of, you know, signage that we could implement. We wanted to develop an overall... And part of this master plan is to develop an overall theme, you know, how we want to, how we want to, you know, sign the project and establish wayfinding. And we've established basically some primary trails and some secondary trails. And the idea then is all those other trails that, as you can see, you know, in here, we will basically get rid of these trails and restore them, you know, preserve them and restore them with vegetation and really make it a wonderful place to be. Part of the master plan is developing a gateway to the canyon. And here at this, where the existing restroom is and where the pavilion is, this is the existing amphitheater area. What we've done is, there's some parking here that's existing right now, and really the areas that we develop are areas that have already been disturbed, again, to preserve those areas that have remained natural, and that's the intent. Here, we want to... This would be kind of an entrance and really an introduction to the canyon, you know, providing information about all the aspects and features of the canyon and really, you know, helping people understand the value of the canyon. And again, these are just examples of what it could look like. Another part of the plan is, you know, we addressed issues with parking. Just because of the popularity of the canyon, we see that, you know, parking during the peak times, it's... They park all the way down the roads, and it really causes some, you know, some hazards that we're concerned with. And what we've done to address that is to maximize the efficiency of the existing parking. We've reconfigured that to do that. We've also, there are a disturbed area to the northwest. We've also developed some overflow parking. Currently, there's about 92 stalls that are there, and with this master plan, it'll be upwards of 157, which will allow for expansion and during those peak times to keep people in the parking areas and off the streets. Also, another thing that we've... That we really, we work together on is developing, you know, at this intersection, we think what is best is a roundabout, and we've worked with Public Works, and they're looking into this, and actually, they will... They think this is a good idea for this, for this roundabout, for this intersection. Again, part of this master plan is, and part of the, you know, part of the Rock Canyon, we wanted to provide education, especially for children. And we've developed three trail loops. Each one of these loops will provide teaching opportunities for all those that come through. We have a geology loop, a zoology or, you know, animal wildlife loop, and a botany loop. It's just amazing, all the plant life and the variety that is there, and being able to educate people on what's there is really exciting. And with that, at the... Thank you. And with that, at the thank you event for the donors that participated in this, there was a fly-through developed. And I'd like to play that now. Just, just quickly in conclusion, we have, again, it's a great place. I, you know, I don't live here in Provo, but I, you know, just traveling into the canyon one time, I really, you can really understand the special place that it is. And being able to preserve this is awesome. Funding wise, the cost estimate, the engineer's estimate to implement this master plan is about $1.5 million. Right now, the funding that we do have places, we do have some RAP funding. And there, I think there's a little bit left in the donations that have been provided. But again, we're actively pursuing additional grants for the area. And again, we'll be looking for ways to fund this and implement this. Councilman Connect.
So the original donation is to purchase half the property exceeded that. And so you've had how much, some money left over?
From my understanding, there's about $60,000 left. About 40,000, about 45,000 went towards the master plan. And there's a little bit left over there, so. Other questions?
So what would you be able to complete with the funds that you have currently? How much of this would you be able to complete?
So we've gone through a phasing process. We haven't identified exactly, you know, what we, what we can do with about $15,000. We're looking for another $50,000 grant right now. And then as the RAP monies accumulate to 250,000, there'll be some, you know, basically a third, close to a third of what we can develop, so.
Well, I guess then looking at timing and sequencing, when do you think that money would be in? When we could actually start to implement some of this and what is?
Immediately, there's some things that we're going to start with is with the trails. We're going to start establishing the trail system. The asphalt is in disrepair. And you want to really get that in good condition and working condition. And we'll develop that, you know, leveraging with some in-house crews and also being able to, we'll be able to get on that pretty quickly.
Could you take us back to the map that shows the Davis parcel? Actually, there's another one that doesn't have the colors. It just showed, there's one that shows a water tank. I was curious if that water tank, which is, I believe, up on the Davis property.
The water tank is right here.
Okay.
This red, it's actually on.
Oh, there it is. So is that, that does exist? And what does the service?
Services the city. It's culinary water. It's accessed regularly, weekly by Public Works Department to monitor and maintain.
And it's a good area?
Yes, from my understanding, yeah, it is. Thanks. Other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a presentation on the items.
It's all right if I could just sit here and do this?
Sure.
Council members, you've been through two long retreats now. You've had time to look at the budget. We've included in your, in your package today, a report that talks about, summarizes some of the issues that came out of the various retreats, including a recommendation to appropriate $50,000 from the general fund balance for council evaluation budgets that allows the city to hire consultants to put administration council identify performance metrics. That's, that's on consideration for you. There was some further analysis done on police officer recruitment and then some revenue projections and things. Also, for your consideration, the budget committee made some recommendations to council that if you want to discuss or accept them and discuss them, I would recommend that. And then we've invited Dustin to come and talk about some of the information that he's gathered. There was some extra revenue that came in that had to be adjusted throughout the budget. And that's been done in the proposal. And then, and where you want to go with the discussion. I know Quinn's here and John Borgh is here to discuss other items as they come up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Strachan. Would you have Kland Peterson here from DPI, so we can get into the budget committee recommendations. We have about three minutes. So it's one of the recommendations involved for DPI. Santiago, would you like to lead us through the recommendation and the discussion now?
Would you?
Maybe I can say a couple of sources of this.
Okay.
We made a presentation, you've seen the presentation for economic development two weeks ago. I was concerned by the statement. Don't do a lot outside of the pool because there aren't many places to put them, talking about retail. There's no question that we have mind issues, location issues with economic development. But if we can't really attract retail because of that, I'm not sure we should be spending the kind of money we spend in economic development trying to do it. I kind of, when I look at the budget, my own budget or the business I've been in, I look at good, better, best. I'm sure all the money in the budget that we have today from the mayor's office is good. I don't, I'm not questioning any of it is wasted. And then we went to a budget retreat and had a pretty impassioned presentation by the police chief saying we need more officers because of a lack of officers and the lack of, well, the extra response that they have compared to other cities. And so looking at good, better, best, I went to areas that I had some knowledge about. After I was economic development director for three years, 1994 to 97. And we brought in River Woods, and we brought in the Provo council during that time. So I have a little bit of experience in bringing retail to Provo. And we're not doing the job that needs to be done, and maybe it can't be done. It seems like economic development department is less focused on that than other things, just based on what they told us in the meeting. But I agree. So it's just, it's not a matter of whether these things in the budget are good. Media services, we spent over almost $1.5 million on media. It didn't bring us Trader Joe's. It hasn't brought us new retail. I'm wondering what value, and that's what the legislative committee came up with, just all we wanted was a presentation on value of media services. What is, very good, or else we might spend the money. Poorly spent, but it couldn't be better spent on public safety. So that's kind of what I think. So that's what, that's what I can, like, I don't know the areas as well, but I felt like there were at least two areas, three areas, a little bit of council's budget, but it's a money that could be spent on public safety, maybe which is a better use than using it for, it's being spent in the current project. And all we wanted from the budget committee is, by my understanding, to go out and do a presentation on the use of that money so we can compare it to the state of public safety. Cam, is that?
Yeah, so we, we talked and discussed, sort of, the proposal that's the budget committee. Did not have finance staff in waiting to answer questions, so we, and that's how it's been this year. So we opted right to this meeting and have maybe some conversation and answers to those questions here. And so the council or the committee recommended first, the general feeling of the committee was that we really wanted to applaud the efforts of Dustin Gray Law and John Borgh for implementing functions in budget. This budget, more than any other, is really, really moving in that direction. And just how appreciative we are of those efforts. This is an incredible strike forward, and we feel like this would be modeled for other cities once we implement it fully. But another question, a question from the budget committee was that the telecom fund is confusing. I'm wondering if it's the council's intent to charge the general fund to pay off the telecom debt. And if there was $300,000 there that may, you know, just from what we could see in the budget, that may be an option. And that would fund some police officers if you said that that wasn't how we wanted to fund the telecom debt. So we wanted that question to be answered, there's probably a rational explanation for that if you still know. And then more in-depth answers to the questions next year would be preferable. And maybe starting earlier with our questions, maybe having some retreats starting in January. So we're not in these last six weeks, you know, trying to find answers to our questions. Or maybe having more cooperation earlier gives more in-depth answers to our questions. So the recommendations from the committee were, in the future, it would be helpful if the other compensation category could be standardized across departments so that it's easier to compare apples to apples. Some departments have certain things in their other compensation that didn't match other departments. So it's really hard to compare apples to apples by department. So it would be really helpful, helpful if that was standardized across departments. If category or heading is already being used by a department, then similar items in other departments should have the same headings that match that. In the future, it would be great to track revenue to rate increases, specifically how much revenue from the rate increases came into the city. Where did the money go? What are the citizens getting for their rate increases? To be able to show the citizens what they're getting for our water rate increases. And there was another recommendation to the council that is support, that we support the idea of innovation, but reduce the proposed interdepartmental budget from 100,000 to 50,000 for this first year with the direction that the administration come back next year, show how the program produced a positive return on investment. And another recommendation was to ask for specific evidence on outcomes achieved or return on investment by the media services budget that Mr. Stewart mentioned. And if the council is not satisfied with the outcomes, then they would recommend that we reduce the budget this year and consider reducing it further in future years if outcomes aren't achieved. Another motion was to, or recommendation was to move 130,148 dollars from the economic development budget to the police department to hire a new officer. This, again, was kind of the good, better, best type analysis, you know, what are we getting for return on this in economic development? And we looked at our expected outcomes on our priorities. And we went through some of the expected outcomes for economic development. Were, ability to buy a soccer ball within the city limits, or indicators, I'm sorry. Outcomes were stable jobs, suitable retail, where residents want to stop, wants to shop in order to retain our own sales tax dollars. Lot of retail offerings, including a rejuvenated mall and a vibrant downtown, help the supply of job offerings to a wide spectrum of social classes, a variety of attractive retail center around the city, in all sense of place. Commercial and retail development that respects the history of the area and achieving that currently in 2030. And then the performance indicators, the ability to buy a soccer ball within city limits. More foot traffic and vibrancy in retail commercial areas, increased tax revenues from commercial property tax and sales tax, improved occupancy of retail space, and resident satisfaction survey regarding the retail latest study. Like that study, from my recollection, was for leaky grocery and artisanal materials oils. So that was that recommendation as far as economic development. And then the last recommendation would be that the council increase the general fund property tax by 3% and set aside approximately 130,000, and increase revenue every year to put toward a new fire station in addition to finding other resources. And for some council members, this increase in tax was contingent upon the cuts being made first. So that wasn't unanimous, but that was, you know, there were a couple of council members that felt that that needed to happen in order to propose a property tax increase so that the cuts needed to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. You mentioned that the budget committee had a number of questions that they weren't able to get answers to in the meetings. And we were hoping to get some of those answers here. Are we, is administration prepared to, it looks like Mr. Gray was nodding, so it may be appropriate to go ahead and go ahead.
Can I make a dumb statement first?
Sure.
I look out for support in Provo. Councilman Harding's impassioned plea that we had to increase taxes to improve the public safety services that we need in the city, which really was my main emphasis, start looking where else we might find resources other than increasing taxes. which really was my main emphasis to start looking where else we might find resources other than increasing taxes, because I think our budget agency is doing as possible before we ask the citizens to pay more taxes. So that was really David's issue that he brought up, that somehow we're more taken care of the needs in the city unless we raise taxes and custom to look at the budget more carefully. Otherwise, the part would have done that, should have probably done it anyway, but that was surely needless.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All right, I think you have some answers for us, Mr. Graylock?
Well, I, I think my hope was that, does the council want me to address all of these questions? Are there other questions the council want me to address? I I have a number of questions myself, but I, I'm curious where, where you want to start the discussion and how you want to go about it and how some of the other decisions that you might be faced with tonight might affect these answers and it's a big complicated situation. I, I, I think it's up to the council, I don't know.
Some of them probably are pretty well hanging fruit, like telecom funds.
Telecom funds, a general fund only funds about sixty thousand dollars of that annually. It's to pay for the actual city's infrastructure that we use to communicate to our satellite locations. So we, we, we use that to maintain that infrastructure and ultimately, if the money were available in excess of any of those predicted needs, we could use it to retire the funds, but the telecom debt charge is the primary source of paying for the debt on the fiber infrastructure.
There's also some saving there, preparing for the day when some obligations approval are not there, that we may have to provide some of that ourselves or someone else will be able to save for that day.
So how much is in that fund currently that you're saving?
I, I can run a report and check specifically. It's
I'd say about a million and a half dollars.
Yeah, I would probably say about that.
Can you ask a question with Mr. Graylock? I'm not sure how to guide you either, other than maybe starting with what hanging fruit.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, I think, I don't know if we just want to go through some of these things. Many of the proposals would necessitate staff reductions and actually each of the three areas that, the cuts in, in the two media services areas and economic development. They don't really have much operating budget. And many of the services, particularly in the media services areas, are citywide benefits. Some of those costs would have to be picked up by individual departments rather than a centralized source where they're paid for right now. Good example is, actually in the last week, I've been in two videos related to Provo three sixty that the media services division in the mayor's office helps to produce as part of the communication that we have internally with our staff that their team helps to do and without their current staff level, it would be difficult for them to provide those types of services. Similarly, the media and web services is actually responsible for all of the branding, all of the printed materials, all of the public facing materials that we give out to the public. And both of these areas kind of represent our city to the public as a whole and so to talk about specific performance measures or, or evaluations under such a short timeframe would be difficult given, given the short timeframe that we were given and I think to cut them significantly initially, you would see a significant impact across the city because of their utilization of those resources. Similarly, economic development, they have, much of their budget is related to the programs that they provide. And if you were to remove a person, they couldn't do many of the programs that their budget includes. And so it would, it would be difficult for them to again, do much of what they do without the people that they have. And it would be much more complicated to parse out a specific set of activities and personnel related to those activities if the council wanted to go that route.
So I think to Kim's point, when she says, you know, retreat in January or something like that, that would be ideal, right? Because we have a long runway to, to talk about these things, but even given the short runway, and this doesn't help tonight, it's evident that we need to spend some work session time with all of these topics and learn much greater depth about what economic development is doing, where retail is at, what media services is doing, how, how they're helping the different departments around the city. And I think regardless of the decision you make tonight, I can still agree profitable time spent on these things.
Agreed, Mr. Stewart. And without those discussions, I'd not want to raise property taxes, that's my point. We don't, we're really hard, it's hard to go as the councils should be, I'll take responsibility if we're not. That's our responsibility and our problem. And I don't, David's saying that without providing services because without raising up revenue, I question until we know if we are, could cut the budget before we raise property taxes. So I mean the motion to raise property taxes, which is kind of strange.
Did we record that, right?
Based on fact that I felt like if we had really taken, and, and I have to admit, it's way shorter, way shorter notice. But if we raise property taxes, basically we have two, basically we have two months to look at those two areas. But anyway.
And that was the general feeling of the committee was if we, and entertaining the idea of a property tax increase, we would have until August to get answers to these questions and to find out what that really looks like. So it seems short notice if we're deciding tonight, but if we're entertaining the idea of looking into a property tax increase, we actually have a couple of months to flesh some of this out and get answers to our questions and decide if there are areas we can cut in order to do that.
And I think the corresponding side of that is how would we spend the money? We haven't had, a little bit of time as administration to react to. But we also like equal amount of time to come out and say, if markets did increase revenue, would it be a police officer or would it be something else? So I think that also would be time.
Sure, Mr. Stewart. Perhaps a little more context around some of this discussion. Subsequent to the meeting, to the budget committee recommendations and following the budget retreat, we've had at the staff level some conversations with different departments. Start with economic development. Economic development has, has suggested and invited council. We haven't made a formal invitation yet, but they basically have offered to have a retreat with, with council and go through all their programs and, and talk about them. Also to talk with some of the significant industries in the city, some of the retail folks that gets more perspective. So that's an invitation that's open to you. With respect to the police, we've learned that the sixty thousand dollars that was discussed for, as, as, as raising the first five years salaries of, of some of the newer recruits, that can be covered within the turnover savings of the city. I think I've explained that. The other side of it is, if they're not able to recruit to a hundred, six, hundred and seven that they're currently funded for, it may not be the right time to start throwing extra officers in. So that also opened up a question with, with, it came, I think, out of the budget committee, some other possible uses for a, for a tax increase, and one of them was to go the route of, of maybe, puts that a hundred and thirty thousand or a hundred and sixty, depending on where you put the tax rate, put that aside towards the future building of, or rebuilding of Fire Station Two on Canyon Road. That then opens up some other options. So as you contemplate all these issues today, you've got a number of, of options to go. Don't make changes to the tentative budget and don't increase property taxes, you could pass it tonight. Another option is make cuts to the budget and do not increase property taxes, pass the budget tonight. Make cuts to the budget and plan on raising property taxes, so you'll have the hold truth and taxation. The approximate dates on that is you have to pass the final by August seventeenth. We have a council meeting scheduled for the eighth, so it seems reasonable that that would be the ninth. That buys you about six weeks. And then the other one is do not make budget cuts, but plan on raising property taxes, hold truth and taxation, same dates. There's another one that comes to, to bear, if you're going to, if, if the purpose that comes out of council is to raise the property taxes for the purpose of, say, Fire Station Two, that's about a two point three million, as I recall, two point three million dollar cost. And over twenty years, you could fund that with a one point, or a hundred and sixty thousand dollar property tax increase, which I think is three point eight percent roughly, correct?
Correct.
But you now, now have two ways essentially to fund it. Or three ways, I guess. I guess you could always save it, save that, that money up and then, and then build it when you've got it, but that's a long way out. You could go with a general obligation bond, which means you go out and you borrow from the markets, two point three million dollars to pay back using property tax over twenty years. But you go to the, or you go to the voters in November with that as a ballot measure. And then you don't need to do truth and taxation because they're actually getting, the, the voters are getting to make that choice at that time. Another option that we looked at, and apparently the city's bond council says it, it looks like you could do it. It might come across as transparent. So you'd have to think, tell people what you're doing with it. But if you were to raise a property taxes by that hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the city is already looking at a revenue bond with sales tax revenues to do the infrastructure on the west side that's going to help with the airport improvements. If you threw that on top of that, then you would have the ability to, to do the property tax, to use that to fund it. And there's some transferring around that makes that happen, but that's an option for you as well. And then we looked at another one option, which was to do an inter-fund plan, but it seems to fly in the face of, of council's desire to, to improve the fund balances. You'd have to pay it back in five years, borrowing, say, from the energy fund. And at five years versus twenty years, you're probably five times the payment. So those are some of the options to consider as you go forward.
Somehow found one point two million dollars to buy some property by the river, the campground. I believe in five years we can find enough money to fund the fire station, I'm very involved.
You may be right. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that those are some of the options that we talked about at staff level.
I think the inter-fund was used well and forced you as a budget committee, the council, to find the money in five years for that fire station. I like that a lot better than the voluntary four. I think, I think we could find the money in five years.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think it's, I'm just gonna say that I think if the economy continues to go well and we continue growth, I, I think you're right.
That's another option.
Yeah.
But we needed to do that fire station, we've got to do it somehow.
I have a question about the fire station, please, sir. We know we need one in Edmond on Canyon Road, but there was thought that we needed to either increase or build another one on the west side too. So we're talking about two fire stations, not one. Is that correct?
One is eventually. The, the other. So just for everything out on the table, talking about a city center and a public safety facility, we're sensing not a lot of momentum. Particularly for the, for the city center, but have more traction than the discussion about the safety facility, that would include funding these two stations or going stations. John or somebody who played tonight could give an estimate of the cost of bond for two million dollars. Someone say.
It's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, about twenty years.
It's been a good chunk of money, bond for such a small.
Oh, right. And.
Yeah, your closing costs and the attorneys and.
Yeah, so the, the estimate I heard was two point two five and then you add another half million or fifty thousand dollars for all those other expenses and you come to two point three, so it's just a round number to work with. And, 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 and the other thing with the inter-fund that we've mentioned was that in, in fact, you could probably, if you did that route, you could borrow at a lower rate and provide the energy fund with a better rate than both parties would normally get in the market.
It has a healthy balance enough to do the casual worship and sacrifice.
Who's not here, right?
To give you an idea though, you'd be talking over, by your time, you're talking about, about five hundred sixteen thousand here.
So let me ask this question, the fire station on the west side, Mrs. Santiago brought it up, but the existing property on, for Fire Station Two, I mean, the property already is owned and you, you just create the one side, build it and tear down the other side, or would you expand the other side? Or would you just add on to the other side, the existing part?
On Station Two? Probably, probably build and then scrape.
Sort of scrape. So is the land already, so I'm anticipating the cost on the west side would be higher because you probably don't have, we probably don't have land, right?
Yeah, I think the sense from the fire department is that the Station Two is more urgent of a need.
Yeah, it is. The other thing is the moment you build a fire station, also you have a staff. It's a fire station.
We're going to be doing some analysis on that later this year. Our impact fees, W L, we've actually included in the RFP a public facilities plan, which includes looking at siteing and costs associated with the fire station. And again, some of those dollars could be recouped during back fees as time goes on, but we will be having that discussion as a matter of course later this year.
Appreciate that. That, that is as a critical need. I didn't consider that, but certainly you could use it anywhere in the city, effectively, right?
Right, and again, we'll only, we'll only help with the, with the new stations or west part of the city, but but it certainly could offset the impact of general fund.
The other thing that Dave Walter just mentioned to me is, when it's an option, is could you see the two hundred four on the fire station? I know we've already committed some to the dump project, but, but that's, that's another option.
So one, one thing I would. Well, one thing I would suggest is that right now, I think, unless you're, unless you're determined to do property tax or increase or, or some cuts, time is your friend in some ways on these other issues. If, 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 if you didn't need to do it in, it's also your enemy. If you decide you have to do it today or between, between now and August to make these decisions, you, you've got some decision points to focus on.
Another thing that was brought up in the budget committee was roads, transportation, there's a bridge on eight twenty north that needs to be redone. I mean, our roads are, you know, underfunded too, so I mean, there are plenty of, plenty of need, there's plenty of need right now and kind of across the board. So the general feeling thing was that if we focus on what's the greatest need right now, cut out where we feel like we can cut out and entertain a property tax increase to, or whatever, other funds, if there are other funds available, let's create it and find other funds, but there's plenty of need right now. I just feel like the need to focus on what's the greatest need.
Mr. Stewart, I did some vote counting over the weekend, because I refuse to do it for. I don't think there's votes to reduce the budget, current budget, in the areas that I suggested. I need five, four votes to do that. I guess what I'd be good with this point is go ahead and pass the budget without the property tax increase, go with other events to raise money for the fire station and work with the new administration on those areas that we might go, could be cut, let's work with the new administration, see what could be done. We're gonna have that in six months, it's supposed to be a whole year. I think probably I would, probably be figured out at this point. If you really haven't given the administration enough time, unless we do a property tax increase, at least if you do the tax update, we're giving the anger of the response. I realize that Wayne, Wayne brought it on.
Why wouldn't we give ourselves that time? What, why not entertain the idea and give ourselves that time?
I wonder if we can raise property taxes when this is an alternative to the fire station.
So even if we didn't make the cuts and we felt like the budget wasn't lean as it possibly needs, still wouldn't be interested in it? Because you feel like there are other funds.
There are the votes.
Let me just, let me just comment to you, Mayor. We recognized as we completed our budget retreat, there were lots of unanswered questions about economic development. Consequently, we sat down as a team to say, what can we do to get those questions more deeply and meaningfully answered for you in the interim, regardless of what you choose to do with the budget. And so we came and proposed to Cliff, I think, a five, five or six sessions, much like we do with water, although we won't spend an hour in a work session, but I think we could spend forty-five minutes and, and talk about the different facets of, of economic development for sure, give you some insight into, again, some measures, some things that we look at to determine whether or not we, we feel like we'd be successful. In addition to that, we, we have asked our media services folks to document, I've got a, I've got a list of all the video productions that have been done last year, there's a lot of the hundreds. I've got a, I've got a list of all the video productions that have been done last year. There's a lot of 100. Uh, of those, most of them have been internal for employees, um, related to key projects that we're working on. Um, and the other, the other components, you know, really managed web, web presence and branding. And we can come in and spend some time with you on this as well. So again, in none of those cases are we not willing to come and dive as deeply as you would like to dive. It's much like the.
It was so valuable what you did with water. Water was incredibly valuable for me, and I would appreciate that. I didn't, I just like.
Sure, welcome.
As long as we're not increasing, as long as we're not considering a property tax increase, then I'm willing to, personally, I'm willing to go that route.
The fifth thing we thought might be helpful, and again, particularly with the, and, and again, when I say relatively recent, I mean, in the last couple of years, a kind of a shift in economic development priorities from job creation to retail. Um, you know, we've, we've been trying to react to that. It's a, it's, it's a sea change for us in terms of strategy. All the relationships we built with the commercial developers don't, doesn't necessarily translate to retail. And so we've been playing a lot of catch up there. But one of the things we suggested, we just had a meeting internally with our staff, with um, the Riverwoods and the mall and the Knicks, uh, to talk about their plans in the future and what they see in terms of retail development in Provo. And we thought it might be a good idea to host what we've been calling a retail roundtable, where we put members of the council around the table along with some of the key retail developers, retail owners in Provo, and have just a frank discussion where you get all your questions answered for the people who do this full time every day, who make money out of it. And to say what, what are the possibilities, what should we be doing differently than what we're doing today? Those are all questions we've been asking. It would be good to let you have the opportunity to have that directly. So we actually talked about maybe doing a three-hour retreat, quote unquote, but a, an idea where we could actually spend the better part of the day and just talk through all those questions, look at specific areas, um, talk to those, to those folks and let you, let Cliff invite them in. And then we could certainly facilitate that and help, help create, again, that deep dive that you've been helping to get.
So we've had a few conversations on this, and we just, we haven't formulated exactly how to roll it out in terms of presentations to council. So, you know, if you'd like to do the roundtable, I like that name better, actually. If you like, if you wanna do a roundtable, we can do that. If you wanna do like a full half-day retreat, or if you wanna spread them out like we do with water, those are the kinds of directions I'd like to just get a sense of from you.
Well, I think Wayne covered a lot of what I was gonna say, but let me emphasize that and, and add a little bit, two things to that. One is if there are any individual line items that Wayne didn't cover in those two things, we're always pleased to sit down with, with council members or individual council members to talk about those line items. Not afraid of that discussion at all. I think the other thing that's just really critical on this retail discussion is that we need the seven council members in harmony with us on that. You are, you're our ambassadors out there to the, to the public. If you're not seeing it, then we've gotta spend a lot more time than we're spending with you so that we're all on the same page and all have the same message to our residents. So I, I'd really encourage those couple of different ideas that Wayne's proposed and spend all the time that you need on.
So we have time frame for the retreat or the presentations that Wayne would want to do?
Our, our thinking was, again, that once, once you got through budget and the Fourth of July holiday, that we'd um, sit down and kind of figure out a strategy, much like we do with water, pick some key topics that are of interest to you and dive deep in terms of the, of the retail roundtable. A couple of the folks that we're talking to are pretty high-end retail developers in Salt Lake Valley that have been in our market for a while, a short, relatively short time, but who really kind of get the current status. I think it's just an availability question. We just have to figure out when, when we could schedule then and when we can schedule later. So that's, I think it's just a, just a matter of figuring how that, when that starts. But I think we could start the first or second council in July with the, with the economic development review. Our thinking was we might spend some time, do a map visit, a deep dive, and talk about what's been happening, what's likely to happen there. Spend some time on, on other job creation issues like, you know, attraction retention and what we do and where we partner with others to do some of that. Spend some time on workforce development and entrepreneur, entrepreneurial programs, more even business emphasis. And again, those were some of the key topics I think we suggested, so.
Was that five presentations?
I think it'd be four or five. Again, it kind of had to be determined, but I think that was, was our intent. We could get that done in the summer.
I appreciate that, and I, I would welcome that discussion, roundtable discussion. I think it would be really, really helpful. And I did meet with Mr. Holmes a couple of months ago privately to talk about some of the account development things and add a couple of presentations. And I feel like a deep dive or a deeper dive is, is needed, um, just to really understand where we're headed. And I think it kind of rears its head at budget time because we, as elected officials, you hear from your constituents about property tax increase when you're, when you're trying to find funds. And that's how we fund government through, you know, fees, taxes, transfer, um, those kinds of things. So when we start talking property tax, you'll have citizens say, well, my income didn't increase. I wanna fix the income. How am I gonna pay for this? And so you, naturally, at least I do kind of think, well, what are we doing in all those other areas? How are we increasing sales tax? If we can bring sales tax revenues up, then we don't have to increase property taxes. So I think that's why it always comes up at, at budget time, especially because there are other ways of bringing, you know, revenue into the city. And are we, and are we really beating the bushes for all those other ways? Are we working as hard as we possibly can to, to do that? And that's why I keep raising the question. And I have, since I'm on the council, I keep raising that question. And we talked about the three-legged stool where, you know, you have property taxes, you have sales tax increase or sales tax revenues, and you have the fees. Well, we've addressed fees. We've looked at our fees. We, we've looked at the transfer. We, we feel like, you know, property tax and sales tax, those are our last two legs. And I, I've always said I'd welcome a, a, you know, off-balance stool if the sales tax revenues were, were longer, if that stool leg was longer. So, um, you know, I think that's just a natural, we, I wanna know. I wanna know, are we doing everything we can possibly do to increase revenues in that, that stream? Um, so it's not personal. It's, and I, I think it's very direct. I think Mr. Holmes would, would agree. I was very direct in person and I'm direct here. I just, I feel like that's really important to, um, do everything we can possibly do first before we address the property tax increase. Because that's just a harder one for our residents. I don't know, it's just, it's just a tougher one for them to wrap their arms around.
Most hate the tax. We, it comes out survey after survey, year after year. So we understand that. It's also the one the legislature's given us, the only one the legislature's given us flexibility on. Budget is not to tax, you know?
Well, I have never comments, um.
I just wanna point out that, um, before you get to the point where you adopt the final budget, um, I do think that, uh, Mr. Graybald was going to explain to you the difference in revenue that came in and how that was being adjusted so that you know that those numbers have changed from what you saw in the tentative budget.
Yeah, there, there have been some tweaks to the budget, and largely the implication is to the appropriation that, given, um, so we got our certified tax rates from the county just this last week. And given that the property tax base grew up slightly, um, by about a hundred, a little over $100,000. And, um, we have, most of those, most of those dollars have gone to other needs that we've identified um, that have changed the budget. Some, some particular line items, there was some missing utility fees in, in a parks area. But we've left a $50,000 surplus in the proposed budget that you'll see tonight as it is now. That $50,000 surplus is intended to remain intact, that should the council elect to appropriate $50,000. Um, it's, that way you could attach specific recommendations to that appropriation. Instead of if it was part of the total budget, then it could be easily subsumed into the remainder of the budget rather than individually identified for an intent by the council. So that's, that's kind of what's, what's been changed since then. There, there is a number of other minor changes to compensation and little tweaks up and down here and there. But overall, um, the general fund has a $50,000 surplus at the moment.
We're gonna do a new page duty, you said?
Um, yes, so there is, uh, attached to the budget documents for tonight. There's a new summary that has all of the funds to it. I, I think the council staff has it.
George, we'll make sure we get you a copy of that during this meeting. So for council benefit, that $50,000 is intended to provide the funding for the, uh, performance measurement um, recommendation that the council had previously.
And I guess it would be up to the council if they instead would rather that be included in the budget and not appropriate the money. We could make that change before the meeting and have no need to hold the appropriation tonight, which we do have on the agenda.
The last time, did you recommend that there was an adjustment?
So the issue initially was that we had a balanced budget during the budget hearings. And since the revenues for the property tax have come in above what our original estimate was, we have a little bit of leeway. So we left that leeway so that we had the option to include that $50,000 in the budget. But after talking with council staff, we felt like it was appropriate to leave a $50,000 surplus so that the council could attach specific requirements to that $50,000 with the intent of using it in January for, uh, budgeting to priorities or however the council wanted to, to phrase their resolution.
So they could program that money now without having to do separate appropriations?
Correct. Um, or we can just include it in the budget adoption.
We could. I think one of the concerns, when I had the opportunity to be with the budget committee and talk through the number of these issues, uh, one of the concerns we had was that the, the concept here was to create funding for a physician or consultant or whatever you chose to do for a half year. But the idea was that the, essentially the new mayor and council would have the ability to figure out what that looked like. And I think the worry on our part was if you just put it in the budget, then that doesn't constrain the use of those dollars. And so if there was some sort of intent language in the, in the appropriation resolution, then that gave a comfort level, uh, to those who were concerned about this, that it would actually not be expended until after January. And it would be done in conjunction with a joint discussion between the new mayor and council. Essentially provides some seed money for the new mayor and council to plan the path that we talked about. So that was, that was the reason we suggested it be done in separate.
That would be part of the intent statement we see tonight?
Yes, it's actually a resolution on the agenda, and it basically says, and this is the summary of it. It says, a resolution appropriating, appropriating $50,000 for the general fund balance for a council innovation budget that will allow the city to hire a consultant who will work with the administration and council to identify performance metrics that demonstrate the implementation or achievement of priorities. So it didn't necessarily have to be a consultant, but that's the intent, that we do something with it along for performance measurement.
Mr. Stewart, help me understand here. So we, we have that extra $50,000. Um, we just had a fairly lengthy discussion about a tax increase to raise $130,000 to put in a fire station fund. We have $50,000, so I just wanna make sure we're saying it's more important to do this innovation fund than this fund that fire station.
This innovation fund is, is, is really about us being more innovative in the way we.
I understand what innovation fund is. That's my question on that.
My guy.
But we're making a decision right now to say, we got $50,000 out here. We really need a fire station. We're gonna go to propose going to our citizens and raising taxes to get this fire station. We have $50,000. We're gonna go use it for this innovation fund this time.
I think, I think, I think that's a fair summary of, of the choice you're making.
Just wanna be clear. If we had a goal to go to the citizens, probably that's.
And this, this innovation fund is providing for someone who is going to actually help work with the finance department to help implement, uh, evidence-based budgeting so that we can then go to our citizens, and our citizens can see how we're moving towards their goals. They, they will have their goals and their priorities, and this is yearly and, not even yearly, it's maybe day-to-day, they can see how we're moving toward accomplishing the goals and priorities they find most important. And I think that, I don't know that you can put a price on that, when you can actually use data to show how you're accomplishing their goals. And things that aren't accomplishing their goals, we, you know, we're not wasting money on programs that are not getting us where we wanna go. I think that the savings in money that's being, that could be wasted on things that aren't working right now is, you can't put a price on that. So I think, you know, yeah, I'm 100% behind $30,000 aside this year and hopeful that the new council will, and mayor will, um, continue with that next year and put that in place. Because I think the savings in, down the road are gonna be huge.
It, uh, just, just a reminder that when we talked about, when the council talked about it at the retreat, the, the discussion was to put that, that ultimately you would need $100,000 in the budget, but we would fund 50 of it this, this year, so it would start in January, new administration. And then if you were going to continue that, especially if it was a position, whether it was short-term or long-term, you'd probably have to put another, another 50 in next year to fund that going forward.
Mr. Stewart, I would make my position here. I'm not in favor of the property tax increase. I think today, we could work much better alternatives, funding the administration faster without going to bonding with, because the council had said basically we don't wanna bond with you there for all possible. My position has changed. I would, I would not be going in favor of doing a true taxation during our July property tax portion.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I'd like to go in also, but before I jump in, I'd like to have just a sense where you're at from this.
Mr. Stewart, I have one more thing. That innovation fund would be for three years. This contracted position would be year-to-year contract for three years. That was the intent, to just get this to be the, um, the point person, to be able to work with finance and to be able to go to departments and, and decide what the metrics are. Because we as a council, it's difficult for us to decide what are the metrics for each of these programs. It's difficult that the administration, um, gives a map right now. So this person would work with finance, would go to departments to develop those metrics. And, and we see that as a three-year endeavor. So it wouldn't go on and on forever. This is just contract year-to-year for three years.
Thank you. Okay, um, I got a few comments then. Appreciate our, our budget committee to be willing to ask tough questions and govern things and generate good discussion. Appreciate our, you know, the development department. I don't feel like I know, you know, near enough about what they do to contemplate cutting the budget. And if anything, my sense is that, uh, we want more to be happening in that area rather than less. So I'm not in favor of cutting that budget at this time. Um, in terms of downtown Provo Inc., I can't remember actually if the, the $25,000 potential cut was part of that $130,000 or if that was separate. But I'm not in favor of the reduction there because I'm hearing that the custom momentum going, hiring director, that things are happening, the donations are on the uptick. We'd be happy to give you a chance to talk here in just a minute, but I wanna try to get a sense of kind of what we have here on that. And as far as the innovation fund, and I'm not talking about the consultant for the, uh, moving to budget for outcomes, but for the $100,000 innovation fund that the administration's proposed, I would prefer not to cut that budget. In, in a sense, I kind of think of that as, as a micro version of, you know, where we're headed with the budget for outcomes and, and a little bit of a laboratory there. So I, I'd like to, I'd like to see how that works as, as it's proposed. So, uh, one other comment is, I think we've got two council members that have mentioned that sort of the property tax discussion is sort of what instigated in some fashion, the, the discussion about making some of these cuts. And, and, uh, so I'm with Mr. Stewart right now. Actually, I would prefer not to do the, do the taxation hearing. And I like the budget the way it's been presented to us by the administration, and I would be in favor of passing it the way it's been presented. Would just like to give us a sense of where you're at for the street.
So as a council, our job is oversight and to pass a legislative law, a budget that is responsible and that is lean to possible. Fortunately, we haven't had any time to really, due to the late asking of questions and, and so we won't be viewing and cutting anything, which I think does send a message to the public. If, if we contemplated, and I, and I dare say we have been contemplating raising property tax because isn't there a good outstanding council resolution that we're supposed to be considering that every year?
Yeah, that was, council had an intent statement a few years ago saying that you'd look at it every year.
Right, right. And I think that was passed responsibly, looking at the fact that there is inflation.
there is inflation. And I understand that some people aren't fixed incomes. I'll probably be there sooner than I like. But the city does have to deal with inflation, does have to supply its services. And we have fallen behind in the past. We're playing catch-up now. But if we are not careful, we will fall behind yet again. I think potentially we're kicking a can down the road if we don't fund the things that we know we may have to be spending money on, whether it's fire stations, infrastructure. And so, I would like to see if we could cut something somewhere. I have no particular feelings about where it would be. But I think it sends the message that we're trying to be as responsible before we do look at raising the property tax. But if we're not going to cut and we're not going to raise funds, which I believe we do need to do to meet the obligations that are outstanding and just out there looming, then I'm disappointed in both categories. And I probably won't vote for the budget because of that.
So, Jim?
Yeah, I still have unanswered questions and concerns too. And I, that's why I would entertain extending this to August to get the answers to those questions. One question I have is the media services that was brought up. Just understanding that better and understanding what is the benefit to our citizens for all the videos that have been done within the city, department to department with Provo 360. I don't know if they're morale boosters or if they're just keep people going, but I'm guessing a fair amount of money and time and staffing hours spent on the production of those videos. And I would like to see what the return on that for our citizens and, you know, the amount of time and money they could purchase. Is that a best practice? Is that something that warrants that kind of involvement, that kind of investment? I still don't know that. I don't understand that fully. And I'd like to understand that better. I know we have more staff now than we did when Mr. Stewart was mayor and economic development director. And I'd like to see some comparisons there. With more staff, are we getting more, are we really getting more return on that too? And so, I still have questions. It's hard for me to say I'm ready to pass this budget when all these questions are still lingering out there. And I feel like it needs more discussion. So, I've been looking for an extension of this, of entertaining the property tax increase is the way to get that extension to August. Not necessarily that I even vote for it, but I have an extension to have a conversation. And if we could prove, either prove that the budget is as lean as it possibly be or can make the cuts to make it as lean as it possibly be, then I would entertain that view of looking at the property tax increase. If that's truly the only other way to pay for the services that we need paid for right now.
So, I don't want to get lost in all of this, something that was just glossed over, which is the changes that we have made to make the budget more accommodated to the council. We went over that kind of quickly. So, I would like to pause for just a minute and think of our finance department for the work that they're going to try to accommodate. Any, one of my, I wouldn't say concerned, one of my questions is that we would have liked to have these questions months ago, weeks ago. If you were feeling these things about needed services and economic development, seems odd to, not odd, but it would have been preferable. And what other questions are out there that you would like us to answer? And give us the proper amount of time to answer those questions in thoughtful, careful thinking. And Mr. Connect, I understand your concern, but we've answered every question you've given us.
Right. Well, for me, it's two things. I understand it. The administration is under, and I would appreciate an extra time, like Kim was saying, to hear those answers. But if we're not going to, if it comes down to the point where we don't have the time, that we don't have the votes to extend this to no two months, and we're not going to raise property tax, because I think if we need to raise property tax, then I'm not getting anything. I'm not getting the property tax increase. I'm not getting the reductions. So, what do I have to vote for?
I mean, we're there.
Do you understand though, like, Dave, why couldn't we have started on this a couple of months ago, right? And are there more questions that will come up during the six weeks that will in six weeks say, "Well, I still don't have questions. My answer's a question. Question's answered." Because these questions weren't out there a few weeks ago. Or at least they weren't verbalized.
I would encourage the, our staff, a week after we have the budget for the mayor next year, if we have a budget treaty, give us a week to deal with it.
Yeah, let me talk about that. We looked at it and realized that we should have scheduled them earlier. In the past, we've always waited till the first meeting and scheduled them. And what we found was a lot of conflicts. We brought it up. So, what Elizabeth and I talked about is that when we set the calendar for council next summer, or in January for the, or December for the next year, we're going to program those in early. And then
Because it was about to be treated for abortion issues.
Yes. And what we'd actually like to do is, if the administration worked with us, we'd actually like to build some of those in earlier in the year so that we can have smaller ones and look at, spend a little bit, a deeper dive into different agencies or departments so we can ask those questions.
Like we didn't want to, which is very hard.
Yeah. So, we learned something in this process this year. And we're going to tweak the process for next year with your permission and engage earlier.
You'll get an extra day.
And I think to the mayor's, with his answer or thought that, you know, we need to ask questions earlier, I still have questions from last year that I haven't answered. And so, you know, I feel like, maybe you feel like you've given answers, but I still have questions from last question cycle that I don't know where to answer. So, I think there needs to be a better communication on, you know, what those answers are and how, and let's flush it out so we're comfortable that the questions can answer as well. I think it kind of goes all greats.
Mr. Stewart? One of the things that I felt like has been very beneficial this year this has been to is that we've been meeting with council staff since January, talking about budgets. And I know that if there were some of these questions, like that Kim brought up, or other council members, or councils a whole wanted to have a rule, wanted to have resolved, as we meet with staff, we're happy to work with council staff and try to work through those things too. And Cliff and his team's been great. And I think that's a resource that we could have even had more dialogue and discussion this year. But we have been meeting regularly and tried to accommodate council by doing so. And I think that there could be some benefit, more benefit in the future with that as well.
So, I did have a bunch of questions early on about the CIP, which I feel is really where the rubber needs to go on a lot of things. And I sat down with Dave Graves. And we talked about why some of the things in there were either confusing or not complete. Or so, he was, spent a lot of time with me. And I came away feeling that there were things that in the future, they might be different. So, I wouldn't end up with so many questions reading through it. And generally, it was very helpful. But I also came away feeling that there are things looming out there that we haven't even started to address on how we're going to get the money to do them. And one of those is the bridge on Second West, which is still in the CIP, and it's like $29,000. And then the Fifth West going through Lago Neighborhood, that is eventually scheduled to be widened and cost a fair amount of money on buying up properties to do that. And so, I think to do a deeper into the CIP, it makes the fire station a small problem.
Mr. Stewart, what are your comments? I've had questions about media services. It's my fault that I haven't probably looked. So, I prioritize media services. Media services because I've had questions about how much was paid. But I haven't probably, that's my fault. So, I'll try to be more prepared in the future. I'm sorry.
Because I didn't mean to. It was better, good, better, best. And I really should have been prepared to make that comment.
Mr. Wrenington, are you still with this, by the way?
Yeah.
Seems like one of the key questions that we need to answer pretty soon is whether we're going to have the truth in taxation hearing. So, I've heard two indicate that they would like to, two indicate that they will not. Mr. Mayor, do you have any opinion on that? I think that's pretty clear, but we'll, okay. So, there's three that don't want to. I believe Mr. Harding does, unfortunately can't weigh in. So, it's like we're kind of sitting at three and three on that right now, Mr. Wrenington. What's your opinion?
And I'm having a harder, a hearing farther as you get away from the front. Are you talking to me and asking my opinion?
Yes, I was.
Okay, Mike, right now, I think, I believe that it's not the right time to do a truth in taxation hearing. I think we'll have, with the discussions we have in the council, I think we need to set up our opinions. And I think, I am grateful for the opportunity to have the discussions we have. I've heard you talk about. And I think those are important discussions to have. So, with that being said, I would like to not have a truth in taxation hearing. And I am looking forward to approving the budget as it is been presented to us.
Thank you, Mr. Wrenington. With that in mind, is there anything we need to do to prepare for the week to come?
No, Mr. Stewart, so if, given that you, in terms of your history, you've passed a tentative budget with one set of numbers. Mr. Graybald, the administration have presented you in the draft ordinance for tonight with the corrective numbers. And since there's been no motions in this meeting to change anything, then I believe, and I checked with Brian, that we can move forward with no motions on this if you're ready to end debate.
Correct. One question?
Sure.
With regard to the budget as it has been discussed, with Justin making those adjustments, is that $50,000 of innovation for the council, how will that budget be approved? Will the council and, will the council have the opportunity to vote on the way that $50,000 stands?
Gary?
Will that be done through leadership? Or how will that be, how will that be current? How that may be settled?
Gary, there's a resolution in your packet that basically describes the intent of that money. And it's been my understanding all along that when the new administration comes in, there'll be some discussion with the council and administration as to how to use that money to go forward. Is that my understanding?
And I saw that and I heard that discussion. I just wanted to make sure that that was my understanding of the right number of things.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Peterson, I know you're, just one second. I know you came all the way down from the mountain. Mr. Scout actually to be with us.
All right.
As I understand it though, I don't think there's going to be a decision made today to cut funds. Well, either, apparently we're moving in the direction of approving the budget as it is, which involves no change in fines. If something were to change tonight, then the only thing that would happen would be we would approve the truth in taxation hearing. And then we'll have six more weeks to talk about it.
Sure.
So, are you okay with?
Yeah, because I will be here tonight. So, no funny business, please. Yeah, I mean, I haven't prepared anything fancy, but I could just introduce myself if that's all right?
Three minutes, please, then.
Oh, it'll be less. Don't worry.
Be back.
Yeah, and that one will be lengthy. I can tell you what we've done and who we are.
Is that acceptable to, to tell them? Okay. We'll give you a more thorough chance to present in July.
Sounds good.
Thank you for coming down.
Not a problem. It was good. I got a little nap earlier and, you know, got to see what you guys do. I appreciate it. What's that? Thanks. I usually have my longer socks with the red stripe. But if I may say, my father was my favorite scouter growing up. And he wore, you wear his, your uniform as impeccably as he does, complete with this amazing beard. I appreciate it. It's just one week of every summer, but I like doing it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down to be with us. So, is there anything else we need to do?
I have a question. So, I haven't seen like the revised completed budget. Is that?
I believe it's in the
So, I have the summaries. We didn't include the entire budget document, given the scope of some of the proposed changes. I didn't feel it was
They just passed around the adjustment, not the all-bonds summary. We have that too, don't we?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's what George asked about.
They, if they don't have it, I can send out another version.
It's not very customary because of the amount of detail. And if you're referring to the booklet.
There are just other, there are just other things that we recommended. I don't know if we need to make motions for all of that, or if that's just going to take in care of it.
I think the, so the budget document itself is not a legal document. It's more of a presentation one. And that, while we do submit it to the state auditor, we're making all of those changes. And I think we'd be happy to make more if you're unhappy with the changes that we present next week, which I expect was, since we're not going to have any changes, there won't be a lot of, nothing for me to fix, really.
That's what interfaces with the public as what they see.
Right.
And so, I just, there were things with our priorities that needed to be fixed. There were the graphs, our budget graph, the administration's budget graph that needed to be fixed, our typos.
And those changes haven't made, yeah.
I don't know if they've been changed. Those, I don't want to have to make motions to, you know what I mean? Make those kinds of, but I haven't seen
No, I'm happy to make those changes. And those will be included in the document. And if there's, like, again, if I said, if there's more changes you want to make, I'd be happy to make further changes to it as well.
They're not, they're not succinct, but they're, but they matter because that's what interfaces with the public, so the public sees that's
And we're happy, happy to accommodate any requests you have.
Okay. So, and I think my request is
Yeah, I have, I have, I have those, yeah. So, I've already applied many of those. I just, I haven't gone through the effort. It is quite a bit of effort to update the large document. And rather than go through that effort to only have to redo it all after today, I was waiting to see what changes the council would make. And then I would present to you the final version of the document.
And I have questions about the consolidated fee schedule as well. And I don't know if we can wait until the other meeting to bring those up, but
How it's presented or what's included or?
What's included, the recycling, garbage recycling was included higher than what we're currently doing. And so, I, it was at $27,000, I think. Right now, we're having to
I believe there was a motion made in a previous work meeting, which, Brian, do you remember? I think there was a change.
Yeah, we had the discussion. I don't remember now off the top of my head what they were talking about. There was a presentation made by Public Works about proposed changes.
Yeah.
And I thought that there was direction given in that work session about
For which option we did. We didn't have
Yes. And then they changed later, they'd come back later. But for the budget purposes to include that based on the decision at that point.
So, for now, it's $27,000 for, it was 16, 14, and
I think they raised everything by a dollar.
Raised everything by a dollar. And that was, that was already voted in, in the meeting that I was in.
I don't know that we voted that option.
I don't remember it being voted completely. So, anyway, so that's in the consolidated fee. And I just want to, I don't want to pass the budget with that in it without having that discussion on what we actually want to happen there. And then there were some other things with the renewable energy and just, I don't know, little things. I can bring them up later if you don't want to have that discussion right now. But I have five
I was just going to, I pulled up the summary of action from the May 16th work meeting. So, item number four at that time, and this was a discussion continued from the second. So, the second was when it was initially presented by Public Works. And when we came back on the 16th, the action that was taken, a motion to direct Public Works staff to include in updates to the consolidated fee schedule rate, rate increases in the compost pickup for residents from $2 to $3 per load, and for non-residents, from $5 to $6 per load was approved, six to zero, health delivery, cancer, and other excuses. A substitute motion to adopt option one for sanitation rate increases, and for Public Works to return to the council in July 2017 with a recommendation with a recommendation of long-term rate changes of approved, six to zero, compensation...
So that is the one, option one is the one.
When he sent me the new consolidated fee schedule, it reflected those rates, those changes to the compost as well as to the sanitation.
Okay. I just didn't, I listened to the meeting, but I didn't realize that that was what, and this is what is in the consolidated fee schedule. So it's twice as valuable, and that's option one.
To answer Kim's question, we would prefer, any questions now, to tonight, to be able to, to prepare for our budget information. So if you do have more, it's our preference to do now, so tonight.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Okay. So there was one on the class D beer license. The other, all of it, like, class A was started at 300, and then it went up from there, but class D, for some reason, was 300. It was lower, I didn't know if that was a typo, or if that was intentional, to have that one be less than the others. Business licensing did not submit any changes to service. I didn't receive any complaints, and they said that they didn't have any, no changes.
So, I know in, there was a previous, there was a correction of a typo six months ago or so to a, a customer's name. So I can double check to see if it would have been that. And they, they just increased more and more as you go from A to E or whatever it was, and that one happened to be less, so I didn't know if it was...
Less than most previously, or less...
No, less than the others, I mean, it just seemed to fall, and I don't know anything about it. So I just, it just was a, it caught my eye because it was different.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the current fee schedule as $300, which is less than the A, B, C, or E.
Okay, so that's probably correct. And then on the library, the resident card is, the non-resident card was $100 for the year. And I, I didn't know if that, I wanted to ask questions about that. It seems like cards are usually like five, 10, I mean, they're usually pretty cheap, but non-resident, we really tend to, $100 for...
Right, yes, the difference is that we build in the cost to the typical homeowner for the library volume.
Okay.
And so it's just in acknowledgement that they didn't pay any of the capital costs. And so as they come in, they contribute back to that with their higher library costs.
And we've always done that, so...
We've always done it, yeah.
Okay, that's a good explanation, thank you. And then for renewable energy, there was a 10% administrative fee and a 5% fee for each Umpa and the city. And I don't know if, so the renewable energy, I just want to know that whatever we cited, when we went through those discussions, nothing has changed from that.
So this program was introduced a couple of years ago, the Renew Choice. This is, this is a wind one, yeah, so...
Okay, so this has nothing to do with solar, what we're doing fairly?
No, no, yeah. So this is an opt-in program for people, there's no mandatory participation.
Okay, good. And then wastewater, they said the fees were doubled for non-residents, and I just wondered why we provide any wastewater for non-residents?
I think there's certain parts of our territory, I don't know, Dave Decker probably answered better, but we don't service people who pay property taxes or things like that.
There are a certain number of connections that the city already has, existing wastewater connections. Some of them are in the county, some of them are in the forum city. We have some agreement with outside agencies to provide some wastewater, and we, we charge them double fees.
And if, okay, and if we were to have more, it would come with the council, if we were to agree to have other non...
If we change any of those agreements, or if the council wanted us, we could, Public Works could inform the council anytime that we accept additional connections into the city, but we were pretty stringent already on, on certain of those.
Yeah, I just, the current state of our infrastructure, I think that it would be wise to have that discussion, you know, with the council, for me to add other cities' wastewater system.
We've pushed back pretty hard on that, we've had requests recently, we've backed.
If that's, that's everything, thank you, I appreciate this.
One sense to hit there, and I have this coming twice this week. On your, on the fees for the water users' rights, a monthly base charge of 5 eighths and a three-quarter service line, or $15.20, or 29 cents. Then one inch goes up to $4.19. How come, because those are all residential. The question I got was from a retired couple, is, we put our meter in 40 years ago, a one-inch meter, we baked the meter. We're using very little water now, but we're being charged more again because we have a one-inch. Why do we charge more for the monthly rate because it's a one-inch meter?
Those, those increases based on the meter size are based on the capacity of the meter. And that's generally what utilities do, is they look at the meter size. Now, I have to tell you, the 5 eighths and the three-quarters, there's a difference, obviously, in the, in the meter size and its capacity. And I don't know that the city's ever made a differential between the 5 eighths and the three-quarters.
It's in the fee schedule, I think.
But they've always adjusted the one-inch, and it's been very consistent, you know, throughout many, many years, where they made the jump when that starts. The one-inch does have significant increase, you know, over the three-quarters. And from a capacity standpoint...
Kind of like a demand charge?
Yeah, and we're just looking at it and saying, it has the capability, they have the capability of putting that demand on our system. Whether they do or not, that comes out of the modded charge.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We're a little bit behind, we've got an important call session coming up, so let's try to move along. We've got a great schedule, let's just go five minutes and try to get back to you as quickly as we can.
It's a fully balanced...
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so let's move on with item number four. This is a report on sustainability in Provo, Mr. Don Jones.
I understand that we're interested in making a final decision on garbage and recycling. And we discussed this in our Provo City Sustainability Committee this morning. And the opinion of that group is, of course, we know that you do what you want to do. But our opinion is that we think we ought to encourage recycling. It lengthens landfill life and it's good for the environment. Everybody knows that. But the basic rule of changing civic behavior is you tax or you charge fees for what you don't want, you reward what you do want. If that's the way you change behavior, then I think it's good to admit that so far, Provo has secretly penalized a little those who don't recycle, but have far more clearly penalized those who do recycle. In other words, there's a very clear charge on every monthly bill for your recycling. This is not really encouraging recycling. This is, in essence, penalizing it. So, but the new fee schedule has some good suggestions there. And our Provo Sustainability Committee would like to recommend option four, the flat fee for all three cans, because that rewards those having three cans with a much lower fee and penalizes those who do not recycle. And this should dramatically increase recycling. I've talked to the folks in the Salt Lake City, and they said they have, when they instituted this, they had quite a significant increase in recycling when that happened. Now, I understand Provo, not Salt Lake City, it's not necessarily going to be easy politically because there's some downsides to it. Because some people's fees, those who just have a black can, it's really going to go up high, a lot more. But option, I really like option five. It might have more political support because it rewards those with a black plus a blue can with a significantly lower fee and does not penalize much the 33% of Provo who also have green cans. So our recommendation is to consider option four and option five. Do we, probably you'd throw this up on the screen, do we, or do we? I should have, I should have suggested this. But we're going to discuss, you're going to discuss that. Yeah. And we're used to giving advice that gets ignored, so it's thrown out of the signal. But that's our thinking on the subject. Yeah, so we're recommending option four because it's going to make a significant benefit for those who have all three cans, drop their fee. And option five doesn't penalize anybody with three cans very much, and it significantly drops the fee for those who have a black and a blue can. There's something, like 57% of Provo households do have a blue can. So that's a lot of people. And so all those will have a benefit, and their fee will be dropped. Only about 33% of Provo, I checked these figures with Bryce Rolfe this morning, and only about 33% of Provoans have a green can. Not everybody has a yard. Those that have a yard don't know how to use it. So I have a green can, and I'm willing to have a small increase in my fee to help all those who do have, or at least in just ordinary cycling. Are there any questions about that? Okay. The next, the next item, I don't have approval from the mayor to suggest this. I'm glad he left the room, but he knows I've been pushing him for this for some time. But I think we need to recognize the environment is a very important part of residents' well-being. It actually has a very dramatic effect on crime and child development and success in school, believe it or not. There's lots of good research that shows this. And so for that reason, I think that sustainability needs to be considered more seriously along with budgeting for police, fire, and other positions. We just, it's kind of automatic to think, oh, we need another policeman, we need another firefighter. But we have no, nothing seriously budgeted for sustainability in Provo City. The Sustainability Committee works entirely without any, well, $1,000 budget from the mayor's office, and that's it. So the Provo Clean Air Toolkit does recommend hiring a city sustainability manager. Admittedly, that's not necessarily divine revelation, but it's some good thinking by a lot of people. For instance, Flagstaff, Arizona is smaller than Provo, it's also a college town, employs five full-time staff and two Americor Vista volunteers. They attract about nearly quarter million in grants and in-kind donations last year. Our committee, we don't have any employees, but we have managed to attract $120,000 in grant money for Provo and other local projects like the Clean Air Toolkit and the Agricultural Toolbox and other in-kind donations. But we've been critically hampered going after the fairly large amount of grant money that's out there because we have nobody on our sustainability group that is a city employee. We don't even have a dollar a year map like Larry Walters. So it would be very helpful to have somebody. No, I don't want to be it, but.
You'll get a dollar.
Yeah, okay. I told the mayor that I don't have permission for the mayor to bring this up, but I've been...
He saw me out of the room anyway.
Yeah, I went for it. But anyway, I hope that the council and the next administration, since Odell is sitting there in the back room, that if he gets to the mayor, that he'll consider supporting full or part-time sustainability director in the future. I think that it would be good use of city money to do that, and it would have enormous effect on well-being and crime and child development, believe it or not. There's good evidence that that is the case. Now, next thing I'd like to move to is the Provo Agricultural Commission. And I'd like to introduce Sean Miller, who is our Provo's agricultural commissioner. And he's been doing good work over the last several months. He was in Spain for a while, but the committee carried on, the commission carried on. And I'd like to give a little time to him, if we could, to say a word about the Provo Agricultural Commission. Sean is a professor of environmental history at BYU, and he's passionately interested in local agriculture.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the time, the few minutes I had to share a few things with you. He's been working on the committee almost a half a year now. We've got a lot of energetic people involved. We've got representation from the farmers' market. We've got representation from people interested in the local food movement. We've got local farmers involved. Dave Connect has been attending, and that's been very helpful with his advice and counsel in the things we were trying to do.
Quinn Sheersen doesn't wear his uniform, but he comes occasionally, too, so.
Right. Commissioner of Agriculture sounds really weird to me. I have no real agricultural background, but I'm picking strawberries for a summer job back in Washington State, although I have worked in a feed store for a long period of time. So I'm learning as I go. But there's some issues that we think are really important as far as agriculture is concerned here in the city of Provo. We still have a lot of farmers. We still have a lot of potential for good food being produced in our community, and that's the kinds of things we're trying to promote. So essentially, I have a two-pronged mission. One is to promote agriculture in the city, and the second is to preserve it. On the promotion side, we've worked on a variety of issues. We're interested in education for our farmers, giving them new ideas about how to approach agriculture in a developing urban area. We've got some tuition money we've set aside for anyone that wants to go and attend a workshop that will be held this fall, teaching some new techniques in agricultural practice. We are helpful in the local food movement. A number of people are interested in this, and so we're trying to support those sorts of initiatives. We want to connect farmers better to the markets that are available here, and we also want to expand those markets. And so anything we can do to make agriculture more profitable and more successful in the city, we are interested in that. Community gardens, of course, we're very interested in. We noticed that one went in on Eighth North. Really, in a matter of weeks, it went from being a fourplex to a full-grown garden. It's full of plants, and that's important to us because we grow, become denser as a community. We want to look for opportunities to give people who don't have a court raker lot to do a little gardening themselves. On the preservation side, and this for us, I think, is kind of a key issue, is a concern about what happens to agriculture in our communities. And it's currently disappearing at a fairly rapid rate as development pushes up against our local farms. There are a lot of good reasons to preserve farms. Open space is important, habitat for animals. But we think that food security is the most important one. We should be thinking about it in more long-term sorts of ways. We live in a bit of a food desert here in Utah, barring Alaska. We are the most isolated place for food in the country. We get no help from our neighbors. The only states that are less food secure than we are are Nevada, Arizona, and Wyoming. And they aren't going to help us out in a crisis. We need to be thinking about what it is we should be doing. Back in 2011, they had a task force at the state level that looked at this issue, and some of their conclusions were that we ought not to become dependent on external sources of food. And they concluded that the value of these lands, that is, the farmland that we have, exceeds every other conceivable use and should be reserved for our security needs. Last year, Invision Utah came up with a strategy for promoting farming and preserving farming in our communities, which I think is very valuable. So we're looking at a number of those strategies that we think are important. We're talking to farmers, letting them know about their options and opportunities and what they can do with their farms as they go from one generation to the next. The most effective programs that have been used around the country are purchasing of development rights, that is, the creation of agricultural easements on existing farms. Last year in the United States, states around the nation spent $4 billion setting aside farms. So we have not done hardly anything in the state of Utah. Utah ought to be the state that ought to be most interested in this because of our food situation. I don't want to take any more time. Any questions I can answer quickly?
All right. Thanks, Sean. On the subject of allocation toward preserving local land for farming and giving farmers an option, other than just selling out urban sprawl, there's something called the Lorraine McAllister Fund, which the state legislature put a half a million dollars in this year for the first time in some time. And there's lots more places to put that than there is budget for it. But we could encourage the legislature to do that again next year. And it probably, I would like to suggest that Provo also consider establishing a fund that could assist with agricultural easements, since you don't know what to do with all your money. But anyway, there are ways to at least have a little fund that can be used for. We have actually, right now, $25,000 in it from, it came out of the Nature Conservancy and for the Utah County Agricultural Toolkit. So that, things do happen. And we have, down the road, we're going to have Provo River Restoration, which may possibly, it's not necessarily, that may end up with some federal money coming to Provo. So we need to be thinking about where do we put some money if it does come in? And then if we have too much money, it's a bigger place to put it. I have one more item on C-PACE improvements, and I don't think I need to really read that. It's just that you remember that Provo opted into this as a way to provide developers low-cost, cash-flow-positive funding for energy efficiency, commercial projects. And we adopted that last September with exclusion of net metering. That's, the C-PACE has been improved since then. Many municipalities, including Orem, are getting very interested in it because now, instead of having to have a bonding requirement, they're using a signable lien. So many cities are interested in it, and we'll maybe come back to that at a later time. Any questions from here about sustainability?
Don puts in massive amounts of time to this without compensation, and he does it in amazingly graceful way. And he's just a constant gentle reminder to us that we can be doing better. On behalf of all of them, thank you for...
Thank you, Mayor, for your support. Nothing would have happened without your support, and I hope that the next administration is as supportive of sustainability as yours is.
I'm amazed at how much Mr. Jarvis and the other members of the committee accomplished with just that $1,000 here budget that they've got.
We're going to double that, actually.
We do get refreshments every month. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Let's see, we're onto item number five, discussion on the Quanis Park detention basin. And as usual, Mr. Deckard, we're about 10 minutes behind there here, so.
I'll see if I can make it up. I'm not going to promise anything, though. While we're bringing up that presentation before I get started, I wanted to express my appreciation to the council, the administration, the council staff, and many others who have offered condolences and their best wishes to my family. And I recently, and I just wanted to tell all of you that it's very much appreciated. I also want to start by introducing a couple of people. They're sitting in the back here, and I'll start on the far left, at least it's my far left, Scott Allen. Scott Allen's an engineering technician that's been with Stormwater for many, many years. I don't even know, Scott, how long have you been here?
I was in July '25.
So, long, long time. We have a couple of new people. Rob Hunter, sitting next to him. Rob is brand-new to our staff. He comes from San Antonio, Texas. Most recently, he has a lot of experience in Stormwater. We've been very, very pleased, I've been very pleased, that he's come to our staff and decided to move back to Utah, so I appreciate Rob. Next to him is a brand-new, again, another brand-new staff member, Danielle Nixon, graduated recently from BYU in civil engineering, and she's a fantastic addition to our staff as well in Stormwater. And then next to Danielle is Brian Torgeson. Brian has been involved in a number of Stormwater projects and will likely be more involved in some of the Stormwater projects that are coming. So those are good staff members that are present today. I also want to recognize a couple of staff members that are not here. I want to recognize Casey Seera and Greg Beckstrom, who have been also long-term staff members in Stormwater, done a lot of good work. We'll talk about the master plan. Those are two key staff members that have forwarded the master plan significantly. Also, Shane Winters and Jimmy McKnight, they're both out on vacation this week with their families. But Shane did the design work for the Quanis Detention Pond. And as typical, Jimmy plays a major role in just about everything we do in public works, and so I wanted to recognize them as well. Let's see if I can get this to go. I don't know if the batteries need to...
I can turn it off for two presentations because the battery, yeah.
Let me, before I jump into the financial side of Stormwater, let me tell you, I've taken a little liberty. I know the title of the presentation is Quanis Park, but I think it would be difficult to talk about Quanis without a little bit of background in Stormwater. And so I'm going to try to very quickly go through a little bit of history with Stormwater and give the council a little bit of background before we dive into Quanis. Stormwater, just from its basic design, is very different. We've spent a lot of time on a culinary water system with the council recently, and it's water that's under pressure. It's a significantly different animal when we talk about either wastewater or stormwater. They're both gravity-feed systems where pipe size and pipe slope make all the difference in the world. They're the major drivers. It's even more difficult with stormwater than wastewater because stormwater is much less predictable. I'll give you a little bit of quantity discussion here in just a minute. But with wastewater, we have a fairly predictable cycle. When people are getting up in the morning, we see an increase in the wastewater in our pipes, and it eventually hits pretty much the same time every single morning at our treatment plant. We don't have that predictability in stormwater. In fact, it's very much the opposite. It's very much unpredictable. And, and one of the things, let me, let me give you a little bit of an idea. We'll talk about a lot of acronyms. Again, and I apologize, in engineering, we do this a lot. We'll talk about CFS, that's cubic feet per second. So in one cubic feet per second equals about 450 gallons per minute. And some of the pipes that we'll talk about when we get into the master plan, we talk about, I'll give you a smaller pipe, we'll talk about either 10 or 20 CFS in that pipe. We're talking about 4,500, 4,500 gallons per minute or 9,000 gallons per minute. Our water system does not deliver 9,000 gallons per minute anywhere in the city. We could not have a fire flow demand on any building where there was 9,000 gallons a minute required. In fact, 4,000 is about the most our system, our water system can deliver anywhere. And 10 to 20 CFS is a rather small pipe. In fact, when we get into Quanis, we'll talk about one of the pipes that drove the decision for Quanis Park. We're talking about several hundred CFS, 100 or more CFS. So we're talking about 45,000 gallons per minute in that pipe. So we're talking about, the point that I'm making here is Mother Nature outdoes man-made systems significantly. When we talk about unpredictable storms and quantity of water, we're talking about 10 times what our man-made systems can deliver. And so Rob and Danielle and Brian and Scott have their work cut out for them in a significant way. Let me, let me just remind the council also, one other item that we talked a little bit about in the water system, we'll talk about detention, Stormwater detention. We oftentimes refer to it in terms of acre feet. And, and an acre foot is about 325,000 gallons. And many of our ponds, we're talking about 10, 11, 12, 15 acre feet of water storage. So we're talking about many millions of gallons of detention that we have to make up for. Again, one other comparison, I think it's important for the council to understand, in Stormwater, we have about 130 miles of pipe system. That's compared to about 260 miles in our wastewater. So it's about half of our wastewater system. Our water system has about 320 miles of pipe in it. So just a little bit of a comparison, again, about 130 miles of storm drain pipes right now in the system. Also, 2,600 inlets, 2,600 inlets, and we have also about 260 sumps. A sump is a storm drain box. It's built but does not have a cement bottom. It's not connected to a pipe system. So the idea behind a sump is that you let water into it, and it's supposed to percolate into the ground naturally. That's the difference between an inlet box versus a sump. And we'll talk a little bit about, more details about the storm drain system. Let me quickly go into some financial, we have two slides on the financial background for our storm drain system that I think is important for the council to understand. Next year's budget, it's not shown on this, but if there was a 2018 budget next year, the total budget's about $5.1 million. And our overall fund balance in Stormwater is about $250,000. It's important to keep in mind, our goal is about 25% of the, of an annual revenue. If we had 25%, we'd have about $1.2 million in fund balance. We have about $250,000 in fund balance. That's not uncommon. You've heard that discussion in other utilities in public works. We're getting back to the point where we have that fund balance. But we also have, just like in the water system, we've got a lot of needs that we'll talk about with the master plan. Before we go to the next slide, I want to look at some of the history, and you can see, this is a chart, and council will see that, see all those numbers. This is, this is a little bit of a history, and I think the main reason that we wanted to point this out is this transfer to CIP. You've heard that discussion in other utilities in public works. We're getting back to the point where we have that fund balance. But we also have, just like in the water system, we've got a lot of needs that we'll talk about with the master plan. Before we go to the next slide, I want to look at some of the history. And you can see, this is a chart, and council see that, see all those numbers. This is, this is a little bit of a history, and I think the main reason that we wanted to point this out is this transfer to CIP right here. This is one of the major components that I always look at as a director. And you can see, many, many years, those, those blue items at the top are very, very small. In fact, I'll give you the details here. You can see, as the rate increases have come online, you can see these have been pretty significant increases the last two years. And the coming fiscal year, we'll transfer about $1.8 million into CIP projects in Stormwater. This is a significant change. Here's the actual numbers for each of those years. I asked Jimmy to break these numbers down, and you can see, the average is around $200,000 a year for a number of years. And the people in the back can tell you, attest to this, that we just don't, $200,000 doesn't go very far for storm drain improvements every year. It's just, it's just not enough to make it down. I also, I failed to mention one of the person that, that ought to be, he's not here today, but Richard Snyder plays a very, very significant role in Stormwater. He does a fantastic job. He's our section manager over Stormwater. And oftentimes, that $200,000, Richard was asked to put in storm drain systems. He would go out and do the piping, he'd do the labor for the installation of the storm drain pipe. And that's how they were making those dollars go a little bit further. But as we get bigger projects, and asking, continuing to ask our in-house staff to do that, I just did not, it's just not reasonable to ask that. Let me give you a little bit of history as far as the master plan. The master plan, this is the last time the master plan was updated in Provo, and I'm going to pass this around, I'll start with Cliff. You can look inside the front cover, the date on it is 1986. It's about 30 years ago that the master plan was last done. And that's too long between master plans. There's lots of things that have changed, not only from a technology standpoint, but city, obviously, development, annexations, all kinds of stuff has changed in the city. And it's just simply too long to go without an updated master plan. In 2012, the master plan was started. One of the things that they quickly realized, Scott was here for that, one of the things that they quickly realized is that they, we lacked survey information accurate, survey information for all the inlet boxes and the junction boxes for the pipe. With a gravity system, it's one of the major components, you have to know your, your slope under pipes and things like that. So, they, they went through a two or three, two and a half years, something like that, process of surveying the entire storm drain system. When I say entire, the master plan, I need to be careful there, the master plan only covers 24-inch and larger pipes. So, we did not go into the smaller pipes, 18- and 15-inch pipes. They're fairly common in subdivisions where lots of the inlet boxes are located. We did not model or master plan any of those larger pipe, or those smaller pipes, just because of the nature of the modeling. The master plan is kind of a 30,000-foot level, and our in-house modeling, and I'll talk a little bit about that, should be getting into the smaller pipes. The reason I bring up the master plan, one of the things that the master plan looks at is, we have, one of the major decisions that we have to make is, what year storm are we going to protect the residents against? Provo City has a little bit higher standard than most cities. Most cities along the Wasatch Front protect on the 10-year level, the 10-year level. Provo City has a 25-year level. I put this in here because this is an engineering graph that we use in Provo. This is really hard to read. And we, we translate this into English so that a lot of people can understand, this same graph is represented here. And you can see on the 25, the 25-year storm is listed over there. And then we have different storms, and it's important to understand that a storm is not necessarily a given period of time. It can be 24 hours long, it can be 30 minutes long, it can be five minutes long. And we have a variety of storms that we have to protect the residents against. And so, that, that table is a little bit more useful for the engineers, but this one makes a little bit more sense for residents. So, when we're talking about a 60-minute storm, if it rains a little bit more than an inch, about 1.16 inches per hour, in that one hour, that's a 25-minute storm, or a 25-year storm. And, but we can have a 30-minute storm that dumps about .94 inches in 30 minutes, that's also a 25-year storm. So, we have a variety of storms that we have to protect against, and I think it's important. I have to make a comment about a 25-year storm. A lot of people, when engineers use that term, they think, oh, we're going to have a 25-year storm once every 25 years. That is not the case. And I, and engineers, and these guys back here are laughing, we wish, as an industry, they never started that. This was started years and years ago, a long time before I was even born. And somebody came up with this idea, and I wish they had never come up with it. Because it takes, most presentations, we have to talk about what the heck is a 25-year storm? And it's really, it's a mathematical equation, it's a reciprocal of that event. So, we put 1 over 25, and that's a 4%. That gives you a .04, and you change it into a percent, that's a 4% chance that we'll get a 25-year storm this year, any given year. We have a 4% chance of having that storm. Now, that sounds like it's low, but I guarantee you, you're going to have more storms, you'll have at least a 25-year storm more often than once every 25 years. When I was working in Leighton, we had six years running where we had at least one storm a year where it exceeded a 50-year storm. It was unheard of. And, and we had rain gauges of Hill R4 space that were verifying this data. And it was just incredible to see this string of major events going through the city. You have to realize, though, those, those percentages also play in geographically into the city. It doesn't mean that your, your whole city's going to have a 25-year storm. Like in 13, when we had a major, major event, I think it was on a Saturday or Friday evening, BYU football game. Everybody knows we were playing, BYU was playing, I think it was Texas that day. And they cleared the stadium and just dumped gobs of water in the grand view area and in the east bench, but not in the southeast corner of the city. It was hit, but not nearly as much as other places in the city. So, it's important to know, and again, modeling in Stormwater is very difficult because it doesn't necessarily, you know, cover the entire city when it happens.
We flooded the highest elevation part of our city.
So, again, Mother, Mother Nature has a really good way about doing even, even the best efforts in Stormwater. So, the 2012 master plan has started to generate some drafts. We do not have a finalized master plan now, but we do have enough information. We have the survey information, the modeling is all done. And we're starting to get some information back. We actually have two different drafts. One was presented to the staff in the fall of 2015. And these are maps, I'm going to show you five or six maps that come out of that study. We also have a version in the spring of 2016, and I'll show you a little bit of change that happened. But these numbers, and I'll go through them very, very quickly, the blue numbers right here are showing the pipe capacity in this area. This is up near Provo Canyon. This, these black numbers right here are the numbers coming during a 25-year event, the major, the, the, the most significant 25-year event that can happen in that area. And so, you look at it and say, as long as the blue number is higher than the black number, we're fine. We have, we don't have a capacity issue. But when the numbers start showing up like this, where you have a red number above it, that is telling you that we're exceeding our pipe capacity. And the contractor went in and, and they colored city portions and said this salmon color, this orange color is where flooding is going to occur during a 25-year event. And you can see, there's some pretty significant areas there. And anywhere where those red numbers are showing up above the blue and the black number, those are, those are going to be highlighted in our, in, in our staff's minds, we have to do something. And you can see, there's some, again, some pretty significant areas being impacted. Again, different part of the city, the grand view and west of grand view is shown here, some pretty isolated areas. I'll come back and talk a little bit about, well, I'm going to talk right now. There's a couple of comments here, and I don't know if you can read those, but the master plan found several areas of the city that are what they call inlet deficient. An inlet box, a lot of people think, oh, the inlet box is where the curb and gutter has an opening, there's a grate, and we have what they call a hooded inlet. So, the back of the curb is missing, and it actually allows water to go into the hooded part of the inlet, and you can get an increased amount. A lot of people think, oh, we can get all the water we want in a hooded inlet. That's not the case. You can only get about, even in the very best conditions, you can get about four and a half CFS into a single inlet box. And in some cases, and I'll, the grand view area is one of them, in the, in the September of 13 storm, we had inlets right here, you'll probably remember, we, we had a pretty significant amount of damage that happened at that location. And part of the reason was, we only had about four inlets at that location, and two of them, I think, were not hooded inlets, they were just a typical bicycle grate. The pipe right here can carry about 25 CFS. It's a lot of water that you can get in there. But if you look at the inlet that were in that area, the inlets could not get the water fast enough off the road into the pipe system. It was one of the issues that they, that they faced in this area, and we identified in the master plan. And a lot of people think, oh, the inlets can just take all the water that, that, that we can deliver on the street. That's just simply not the case. And they, in the master plan, they identified significant areas, grand view overall is, they identified it was inlet deficient. And, and it's an issue, even though we have the pipe system in place in many of the, of the roads, we just simply do not have enough inlets to get the water off the road, please.
Are those smaller ones easier to clog?
They are. And, and that's, that's one thing that you have to be careful about. When you talk about inlet capacity, that's assuming that the inlet's completely clean, there's nothing in front of it. And again, best-case scenario, it's in a sag where your, where your street is forcing the water to the inlet box, and it's actually depressed in the curb a little bit, you know? And most of our inlets don't need that. Most of our inlets, even though they're hooded, we, we can take about two CFSs all into a hooded inlet. So, when you're delivering 20 CFS or more into this, you've got to have 10 inlets in that area just to get, just to get it off the roadway. And so, again, that's one of the significant issues that we look at. So, as we've extended the storm drain into the grand view, many of you know, we've extended this up into the grand view area since that storm and other locations, Canyon Road. Brian, Brian was involved in the design on Canyon Road there in front of the stadium. We've done major improvements in these areas, and we focused on inlet capacity. And oftentimes, you'll go, you'll go through these neighborhoods now, you'll see double inlets, you'll see inlets, you know, no more than 400 feet apart. And that's simply an effort to try to get the inlet capacity on the system up to where it should be.
We control the amount of inlets in the Quantas subdivision, and what happened? Do we require me after the badge?
We do. So, in recent, again, and this is part of the reason I made the comment about the, the master plan, lots of things have changed since 1986. And one of the things that, even from a technical side, from the engineering side in public works, one of the things that they never really talked about in, even when I first came into civil engineering, inlet capacity was hardly even talked about. And yet, since the mid-'90s and into the 2000s, inlet capacity has become one of the big issues. And so, just from a, from an industry standpoint, they, they probably, when this developed, it wasn't really on the forefront. They, they were probably looking at the pipes, okay? And in many areas, they didn't even develop a pipe system. They, they only built the roadways so that it would carry stormwater. And a lot of, you know, there's some sections of Provo that still do not have a storm drain system, a pipe storm drain system, they only use waterways in the streets. And in fact, there's actually a lot of discussion that goes on about the major and the minor storm drain system in a development. And the minor storm drain is actually the pipe system that we're focusing on today. The major one is actually the roadways. And you should be designing roadways to carry stormwater events away. Because, you know, a city that only designs a 10-year event, you're going to, you're going to have that event pretty often, at least every couple of years. And maybe, you know, again, like my experience in Leighton, you're going to have a major event that exceeds it a number of times, and your streets better be designed to carry that and protect your, your houses on both sides of those roads. So, anytime you have a low point, and this is exactly what happened in Grandview right here, you know, some of you are more familiar with that, that area, I think it's Grand Avenue and 900 North. It comes together like this in a bubble, and it's, and it doesn't have a road that gravity feeds out of that corner. And so, everything got trapped in that corner, eventually topped, overtop the curb and gutter, and went down the hillside.
We also had in Grandview some homes that we let them build their driveway down into their garage. So, when the water was coming down the street, it wasn't hard for it to go up and over that gutter and down any of the basins.
1970s, very common to have a split-level home as a, as a, it's, it's one of the homes that, as an engineer, I just, oh, I just hate to drive by them. And, and anytime that road's going to fill up, your, your driveway's going right the wrong way. And it's likely to come right into that home, into that garage. So, we'll go through the rest of these. This is the west side, and again, not much development here, not a lot of information. And this is the southeast corner. This is one that I want to focus on, this is this, we call it east-central part. You can see lots of orange on this, a lot of areas that are struggling. And I'll start to focus a little bit more on Quantas. Quantas Park is up on the right-hand far corner there of this, of this map. And you, you can see the Joaquin neighborhood that's located just south and west of this intersection, this area. It's showing some flooding issues. And they've had a, a history, not just in the '13 storm, but even since I've been here, there were two storms in 15, 2015, one in June, one in September of 15, that created flooding problems in the Joaquin neighborhood, some pretty significant issues. And they weren't a 50-year storm, they were in the 25, 20-year range. You know, they were, they were pretty big events, but not something, at least in my opinion, that we should be able to handle. So, this kind of led the discussion along Quantas Park. So, these are excerpts that I've taken right out of the master plan. And, and I, I'm happy to give a copy of the master plan as we get a little bit further into it to the council. But you can see, if you read through this top paragraph right here, they're basically, if I can summarize, there's two main lines in our storm drain system that come together basically at 9th East and 800, 9th East and 800 North, which is very close to Quantas Park. One of those pipes carries 118 CFS, the other one carries 125 CFS. And they go through a pipe that's located immediately south of the BYU campus, and it's actually an inverted pipe, that's why they call it a syphon. This is not an ideal way to design a storm drain, by the way, but just given the age when it was put in, it was, it was put in a long time ago, they really didn't have much choice. So, they put in an inverted pipe, and it actually pushes the water through. The problem is, is that syphon has a capacity of about 110 CFS, and it has two pipes leading to it that deliver more than 110 CFS. Combined together, it's more than double what that capacity is. And so, it started to tell us, hey, we've got an issue, a pretty significant issue in this area. They came back in the master plan and the draft, and they, and they told us, here's some recommendations. And here's the first time that the Quantas Park Detention Pond is talked about. And they give some detail there, they give us a size. They also say that the BYU campus, we need to look at detention on campus, BYU's part of the solution in this area. And then also maintaining the 800 North syphon that I was talking about. When the syphon was originally built, it had an access point into the low point on the syphon. It had been since sealed off, and we could not maintain the syphon, and we've rebuilt that access point. That's one of the projects. And if you've driven by 800 North, I think it was in January, early January, we, we did about a quarter of a million-dollar project and rebuilt the access point. So, it's important to understand, that access point is a sealed access point, because if it wasn't sealed, we'd be blowing water out of that seal all the time. So, Casey was one of the engineers that oversaw that project, and it's a, it's a significance, a pretty sophisticated system to, to seal that and yet be able to access it and have maintenance in that syphon. This is a, again, another map out of the master plan. And you can see, this area, this purple area is all city development that already exists. This is in the tree streets and some of the adjoining neighborhoods. All of their stormwater is generating in those neighborhoods and getting, working its way either to 800 North or to 9th East. You can see the part of the of the campus that generates stormwater, and it works its way back to 9th East also. And this is just helping us understand where the water's coming from in this area. And again, you can see, this is where they start to talk about the detention pond possibilities. So in the second draft, I mentioned, remember, we had two drafts of a master plan. In the second draft, one of the things, one of the questions that the staff answered or asked, some of the staff was concerned about turning a park into a detention pond, a regional detention pond. And if you've seen the construction there, you can probably see why staff would be saying, well, do we really want to make that big of a mess in a park? And I think it's a worthwhile question to ask. In the draft that came back from the consultant, they said, if you don't build that detention pond, here's what you have to do to solve the problem in the Joaquin neighborhood. And it's a pipe system. It's a little bit hard to see, but it starts with the blue pipe up there, goes green, red, goes back to green. And those different pipe sizes are listed right here. So 42 inches is the blue. It starts with a 42-inch. It goes to 48, and then by the time it's red, it's a 54-inch pipe. A 54-inch, that's inside diameter, you gotta remember, okay? So we're talking almost six feet inside diameter pipe. And even if you bury it with one foot of cover, which is standard practice for a storm drain, you're talking about pipe that's at least seven feet into your roadway. And the problem that we start to have with this type of a pipe system is, you're starting to get to the point where that pipe is interfering with your sewer laterals. Some of you that are involved with construction will know that your sewer is usually in the eight-to-10-foot range, your sewer main, but you've got to run a lateral from the top of the main back into your homes, and that has to be at a 2% grade. And so, by the time you get out to the side of the street, you're probably a foot or a little bit more, depending on the size of the street, higher than your sewer main. The point that I'm trying to make is, by the time you put in six-and-a-half-foot outside diameter storm drain pipe, and bury it a foot, you're seven-and-a-half feet deep, you're gonna interfere with your laterals. So basically, what this is telling us is, we're gonna have to put that storm drain pipe in two ways. We're either gonna bury it underneath our sewer lines. So we're gonna go, if you were in Provo City when Central Utah Water did their 60-inch water line down 9th East, do you remember that project? And they were burying, they were putting a 60-inch line, and they were burying it under all the existing utilities, for the exact reason I'm describing. They didn't want to interfere with all the other utilities in the roadway. Would be doing the same thing with this project. Or, we would have to put two sewer lines in the road, one to serve one side, the other to serve the other side, and we'd put the storm drain in the middle. Well, you can imagine, and here's the cost estimates for that project. So, part of the master plan, we always ask for the consultancy to give cost estimates. And I've highlighted, it's project 30 through 36 over there on the far left-hand side. Here's the estimate that the consultants were giving us. And we had some internal debate with the consultants whether these estimates were actually high enough. If we had to bury this underneath all the existing utilities, they probably weren't. But we said, let's just run with the numbers that you've given us. I totaled this up. This is $5.6 million to solve the problem at Kiwanis, or basically at the intersection of 9th East and 800 North. The Kiwanis detention pond that we bid out cost $1.8 million to solve the problem. This solution was three times more money to solve the flooding problem in the Joaquin neighborhood. And it was largely, it was one of the main factors that Public Works used to decide to build the detention pond where we did. It was not, it certainly is not an easy project by any means. I don't want to minimize anything that I say today. I don't want anybody to take away that I'm thinking that it's an easy project in the park. It's probably less disruptive, it's less costly, yes it is, but there's certainly a lot of pluses, a lot of very, very positive things in Kiwanis that we have disrupted in a major way. And we took out a number of trees, a number of large trees, in order to get the pond built there. We had to go to the school district. Let me just pour in you a little bit to this. This is Wasatch Elementary, and this is the playground that sits immediately south of Wasatch Elementary. We had to go to the school district and ask their permission to use their playground in combination with the park, in order to get 11 acre feet of storage that was recommended in the master plan. So the basic system, let me go back here. The basic system goes up, and you can see the pipe, I apologize, I'm not tall enough, right there, that pipe right at the very top of the picture is coming off of 9th East. And so, we're basically taking a pipe out from the playground at Wasatch Elementary, and it's gonna intercept all the stormwater in 9th East and take it into the playground on Wasatch. And it pipes it around the park right here, and also around the park to a control structure that sits right there at the southeast corner of the park. That control structure, the reason we call it a control structure, has an orifice in it. And that orifice will not let more than 44 CFS out of that pipe system. If we have a rain event that's only raining 44 CFS or less than that, it's delivering that much water, it will let all the water out, and you will see no water in the detention pond. It'll never impact the detention pond. We also intercept this pipe and take it into that same control structure. So everything that's coming, if you can picture that colored residential area in the BYU campus, it's basically saying, anytime it rains in that area, if it only generates 44 CFS, we won't have anything in the detention pond. If it starts to generate more than 44 CFS, we'll hit that orifice. It's basically an irrigation head gate. It's the same principle. And we'll start to push water out into the grass area in these detention ponds. And in a major event, and again, those pipes, you've got to realize, those pipes can deliver about 200 CFS together, combined. And only 44 CFS is gonna escape downstream. And so, we could be pushing somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 CFS into these two detention ponds at the same time, in a 25-year event. So they could fill up fairly quickly.
How deep?
No more than three feet. And part of the reason that we do that is for a safety issue. We don't want to put somebody in an eight-or-nine-foot, you know, potentially wandering into that kind of a pond. The ponds are slow, very gradually, all of this area right here, so that if somebody did wander into it, they're not immediately into deep water. It starts very, very shallow, and eventually, you know, gets deeper. But we're very, very careful about the safety features in the ponds. One of the major concerns with the school district was the grading system and the control structure. And can somebody get, you know, a foot caught, or can grates come off of those control structures? And the answer is no, they can't. The grading system and the way that we do the control structures, the grates can move, but they cannot come off. And that's one of the key elements that I personally like. Shane did a fantastic job doing the design on it. Every once in a while, you'll see a detention pond that has a grate in the bottom of the basin. And the grate is loose, and under a significant storm, you can actually force the grate off the box. The problem is, is that grate will move, and if somebody's wandering into the pond, even one of our maintenance workers, and they don't know that there's a box there, they can go into that box. And so, we don't put the box in the bottom of the pond. You will not see that in any of these control structures.
Rock Canyon detention basin, three feet also?
No, Rock Canyon is a flood control basin. And the reason that Rock Canyon is different is because it has a flood event and runoff that could potentially be coming down Rock Canyon. And so, it could be, you can see the difference in Rock Canyon. It could be significantly deeper. But it's not, it is not a storm. It's in a different classification. Different project. So, again, you can see, I'm gonna try to hurry through this. This is the pipe system coming off of the, off of 9th East. You can see the pipe system goes around the park. And again, control structures will push the water into these points and fill the pond. What did you click?
I don't know what you've done.
There we go. So this is the Kiwanis, same thing. You can see the pipe system coming around here. And these are the structures that are over on the west side of the park that would fill the pond. If you've driven by Kiwanis recently, they have it rough graded. And it is pretty significant. At the northwest corner of that, we have about an eight-or-10-foot cut there. And the reason that we do that is, we have to, in order to maximize the capacity, we have to flatten that field out. A lot of people, a lot of the neighbors, when we first started this, they came and said, well, it's pretty flat already. What's the problem? And a lot of people were surprised when we said, you really think, you know, I was standing with some neighbors, do you think it's really eight feet taller over there in that corner? And it really is. And if you go and look at it now, it is really a flat field. In fact, it's 0.5%. That's what we graded it at in order to get that capacity. So it's a cut over in this area, it's a berm down here. And so, we're kind of building a little bit of a stadium seating-type thing with the soccer field. We work with our Parks and Recreation, and I need to extend my appreciation to Parks and Rec. They have been very, very generous in allowing us to do this project. And I know it's been very, not only hard on them, but also on residents to see this park torn up the way it is. But we do have a number of trees that are being put back in. Let me just go through, these are the recommendations. I want to point out a couple of them to you. You can see Kiwanis Park is right there, that blue line. That's the recommendation for the regional detention pond. And that's what this is called, is a regional detention pond. But you can see some others that are also recommended in the master plan up on Canyon Road. Again, our Parks and Recreation Department has a park planned about 3,900 North on Canyon Road. We will use that park when it's developed and build it as a detention pond. It will be built as a park. We won't tear it up after the fact. But we'll build it, and we'll actually depress it a little bit from the road, so it'll sit about two or three feet lower than Canyon Road. And our storm drain system will be able to push water in high events into that grass area of the park. And that's the basic concept of a detention pond. You can see other improvements that are recommended in the master plan. There's discussion about some other detention ponds in this area in the center of the city. And again, I'm gonna quickly go through these. West side, one of the, the only comment that I'll make on this is, they're telling us to detain future development on the west side to .1 CFS per acre, which is kind of standard practice. But one thing that we will question our consultants on before we finalize this, instead of having a bunch of small detention ponds in every single one of the subdivisions, my preference is to have a regional detention pond. So look at Footprinters, or Parking Lot at the Footprinters Park, or other parks that are going to be developed, or even schools, and look and see if there's ways to turn those playgrounds and those green areas into regional ponds. I am not a fan of small individual detention ponds and subdivisions. They turn eventually into a weed patch. They're a problem for the resident, they're a problem for the city, and I think regional detention, especially in a park setting, is ideal. So, one of the things that we'll...
Buckley Draw, we have a makeshift thing up there, which we need to be fixed if we were to build homes. Is that kind of in the plan?
So Buckley Draw has two things going on with it. So in addition to the canyon and the runoff event, it also has a debris flow potential. And that's partly why they built the berm they did on Buckley Draw. So again, it's got two or three other components to it that are not just rainfall-related.
And is it really as dangerous as it used to be after the fire, now that it's regrown?
If, my experience, when I worked in Draper, we had two foothill fires while I was there. And the first five years are the worst, right after a fire. We actually had several debris flows when I was in Draper. We, I think, one of them covered 11 homes or something like that, impacted basements, not covered the home, but impacted basements. And they can be pretty significant events. It is something not to play around with. But usually, we're told, after the five years, and you get vegetation and stuff like that, it usually The only other thing that, if I can get it to go to the last map here. There's the last map. I wanted to show you kind of the center, the east-central part of the city. Again, there's several regional detention ponds that are identified. There's others that are just verbally talked about. And we'll need to work through some of these areas. One of those areas that is highlighted is Franklin Park. It's a brand-new park. And I'm personally a little frustrated about the conversation not happening earlier on it. We've actually talked about moving that north of the railroad tracks for a number of reasons. The railroad tracks is a barrier in a number of ways for this city, but not only from stormwater. You can imagine trying to get large quantities of water underneath the railroad tracks, it's a huge challenge for us. And so, storing it someplace north of the railroad tracks would be more ideal, and then letting a smaller amount out as the detention pond empties would be the more ideal circumstance. So, I think the major takeaway from this is, we have a lot of work still to do on the master plan before it's finalized. So, I think with that, that's the end of the presentation that I had prepared today, unless there's questions.
So, if you were to reject the needs that you can proceed in your plan, the cost of those needs versus the funding available going forward, next five, 10, 20 years, I would say you're short.
I'm glad you asked the question, because one of the things that I was gonna tell you about the master plan, right now, as the master plan sits, they've identified $44 million of improvements that are needed. And that number will probably adjust slightly, but we're close to where we're at right now. You can do the math, if we're doing $1.8 million. So we're getting close to $2 million. It's still more than 20 years of improvements that they've identified in the master plan. So, we've got a long ways to go in storm drain. And we're trying to pick key projects that are gonna make big differences, and Kiwanis was one of them. It was one that, you know, seriously jumped out at us as not only existing problems, but identified as a quantity, you know, a technical group that came back and said, you guys are way under, you know, the capacity of that siphon, and you need to start doing, looking at something to solve that quickly. So right now, the way we're doing our choices in CIP projects is, we're basically looking, what's the biggest bang for the buck that we can get? How many problems can we solve as quick as we can? That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item number six, a discussion on the Provo housing. I appreciate all of the range this. Let's talk at the same speed on the top of the clock because we have some other guests here. This will be presented on your standby by Robert Vernon, Executive Director of the Provo Housing and Garden. It looks like you have some other guests here.
No one should have in this city. No one. Hee-hoo-hoo, where are you? This rocky crowd also fooled a man who stood up and publicly defended the whole room.
That's not you.
It's not me.
That's a lot friendlier than this.
So much for my dramatic entry.
So for the rest of council, Councilmember Harding is off the plane and trying to join us.
My name's Robert Vernon. I'm the Executive Director of the Provo City Housing Authority and the Provo Nonprofit Housing Development Corp. Housing Development Corp. Generally, when you have somebody that's going to come talk to you about portable housing, this is kind of what you think about. This has been the conversation. This has been kind of what's controlled everything. And so, you know, there's a lot of emotion involved in it, and the rhetoric gets pretty And I don't know where that housing conversation kind of went wrong, but, you know, it's ended up being those people. And so it's, we don't want those people in our neighborhood. We don't want those people, you know, or that kind of facility near us. And so today, I'd kind of like to define who those people are and kind of frame the conversation a little bit differently. So those people, the area meeting income for Provo is $69,200. 80% is the... 80%, 50%, and 30% income levels are set by HUD, as is the area meeting income. And then part of that 30% of AMI and below is the homeless. And that's a discussion that Brent Crane had a few weeks ago with the council. It is separate from low income. And these numbers are based on a family of four. So this is the market that I'm talking about, the low, very low, extremely low income. So put an hourly wage to that. Low income, if you have one wage earner in a family of four, he's got to make 26 bucks an hour to be able to be in that category. If you, you know, if there's two people earning, then you can have, you know, two people making So who are those people? Everyone I just showed you is those people.
Maximum on three. To replay your message, press one. To delete and re-record, press three. For delivery options, press four. To fast, press... To cancel this message.
Thanks. So every one of these people is, would be low income, would be considered low income. So schoolteachers, police officers, waitresses, bus drivers, anybody doing customer service. If you went to a restaurant today, the person that served you, the person that checked you out, the cooks, everybody involved in there, the grocery store, hardware store, shopping center, every one of these people fall into this category. So those are those people. How many of you know somebody that's been divorced? Divorce is probably the most significant event that forces people, one of the spouses who ends up with the children, into a low-income category. Serious illness does that as well, and death. There are major events that are unforeseen where one of the wage earners is out of the family, and all of a sudden, you have a single parent with kids that is low-income. So who are those people? They're your neighbors, people you go to church with. They're people you interact with every day, and you depend on them if you go shopping or go to a restaurant. So those are those people. And they're you and me, but for the grace of God. I mean, you know, so many people live paycheck to paycheck. And one event, a car breaking down, or something that forces them to spend money on something that they weren't planning on, and they can't make the rent payment the next month. There are lots of people that you know that are in this category. Here's the statistics from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics from 2016. This is where some of those numbers came from. So the other discussion is, instead of talking about this nebulous housing, I want to talk about home. You know, home means something to everybody. And it's, to most people, it's family. You know, it's where you sit around the table and talk. It's where your kids learn life's lessons. It's, you know, safety. It's, you know, having your pets there with you. It's love. It determines where you go to church, really determines who your friends are outside of work. So, you know, home is a huge part of the fabric of the community. And the people who do not have a consistent home that's affordable, they become less and less a part of the fabric of the community. So let's talk dollars, something that matters to the city. Live where you work. The Housing Authority employs 20 people. I have a million-dollar payroll on an annual basis. I'm a small employer. One person lives in Provo. If you take the average income across 20 people, a million dollars, $50,000 of income stays in Provo. $950,000 of my payroll goes elsewhere. Because people shop, eat, do everything where they live. They don't come back to Provo to spend money. And so housing is a critical component of the future of Provo. So when I came here in January, I wanted to live in Provo. I wanted to live close to work. I looked at every house out there, and I couldn't find anything that I really wanted. I mean, there were too many rentals around. A lot of the houses I looked at, and I didn't want to move into that situation. The only house I really found that we liked was up on the bench. It was half a million, and you have to put another $200,000 into it, and I wasn't going to do that. I just didn't want to make that type of investment. So I ended up in Linden. In two months, I put about $12,000 into this house fixing it up. All spent elsewhere. It was spent with people that have offices in Linden, Lehigh, Home Depot in Linden. So there is a huge economic impact for this city for not having housing for people that work in the city. The cost of housing burden. Housing burden is defined as you spending more than 30% of your income on housing. The people that are cost-burdened and spend more than 30%, and there's a lot of them. In fact, there's a lot of people spending over 50%, not just low income. There are people that are not considered low income that are spending 50% of their income on housing. And when you do that, you don't have money for other things. So these people aren't going out to eat as much. They may have one used car instead of buying a new car, or have two cars. You know, when they're not shopping as much, there's just a lot of things that they can't do because the burden of housing is too great, and that's the first thing they spend their money on.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
It seems to me, my experience has been, in the county, we had the most low-income housing of anywhere. We talked about subsidized housing. So why can't we find places in Provo? What is it about Provo's housing costs is causing the problem? Because it's Provo, and it's close to BYU, and hospital, or what is it?
You're asking why there isn't more low income?
Well, we have the most...
You're saying we have the most in Provo?
Income subsidized housing is more in Provo than anywhere in the county, right?
Okay. No. And, you know...
That to me, because every city in our city shows that we have the most income subsidized housing in the county.
And we can do that. We'll send out a sheet. Lynell and I will get together. But Utah County spends, they have a ton of housing outside, you know, in the county.
I'm talking about...
And plus, there's a bunch of tax...
City to city. What city has more income subsidized housing than Provo?
I don't know that any city has more in the county besides Provo, but collectively, you know, all those cities share. I mean, we can give you a breakdown of what's out there in every city.
That's really helpful.
Okay? Yeah, we can do that for you. So cost education. All you have to do is talk to a teacher, and they will tell you that kids that don't have adequate housing, stable housing, have trouble learning. They come to school hungry. They're there for 60, 90 days, and then they lose their housing, and they go find housing elsewhere. They have to go to a different church. They have to go to a different school. So they're uprooted over and over again. And the cost to the education system is pretty extreme if you start talking to the educators, because they deal with this on a daily basis. When kids come in and they just, they're behind, they just, they don't have the support resources at home to learn, and they're just not ready to come in and learn when they come into the classroom. Yes.
So kids that are constantly uprooted like that, are they more likely to end up in gangs?
I don't know in, I would say in gangs. I would say that the kids that are uprooted, they don't get the education that they need. And so their chances of being, you know, economically viable, of, you know, being able to go to, through high school and go to college, and/or to technical school or whatever, and come out and get a good job and be a person that we would consider a, you know, a great addition to our community, they have challenges in doing that because of the learning curve.
And if they're uprooted all the time, they're not feeling part of the social fabric. They're not linked to a particular neighborhood.
Not at all.
No friendship and loyalty. So obviously, they may gravitate towards other social circles.
They could. You know, I don't know what the statistics on that are, but, you know, it's very possible because they are more at risk when that happens. And the thing that you see over and over again is that there's a generational component to housing, because the kids learn what their parents are doing. And so a lot of times, if they don't have those opportunities afforded to them, because they are moving over and over and over again, they're, you know, they end up on housing because that's what they've learned. So... And then the cost of unemployment. You know, if you, I don't know, if you can't take a shower in the morning, if you're not sure, you know, if you're hungry, if you're not sure, you know, where you're going to sleep tonight, you know, it's hard to go to work and be consistent at work and maintain and hold a job. And so, you know, there is a cost of unemployment to the community, because you could have people that are more productive and producing for the community. And then on the unemployment side, there's also a cost in services, because you have a lot more in-city services that these people need in terms of, you know, whether it's healthcare, or whether it's police, or whatever it ends up being. So I'm going to go through some numbers where I got some of this. Right now, we have, for 2017, the fair market rent set by HUD for a two-bedroom is $818. Any of the people that are in housing will tell you that a two-bedroom is between $950 and $1,000, and sometimes up to $1,200, I've seen for a two-bedroom. So this $818 that HUD's providing the subsidy on is woefully short, and that causes part of the problem. This is Utah as a whole, the fair market rent, $849, which is $1,632 per hour to be able to afford a two-bedroom home at $849. The other thing on this slide I'd like for you to look at is the average renter wage over here of $1,239. And this shows it just a little different. The, if you have a full-time minimum wage job, you make $15,080 per year, and you would be able to pay $377 unless you pay more than 30%. If you are at 30%, which is extremely low, income, which is 24/6, you could afford $525. And then this is the $12 mean renter wage is $25,000. They can afford to pay $644. That's significantly short of where our market is currently. So here's another look, and this is people that are paying more than 50%. So this is severe burden on housing. Renters with severe housing problems, $6,700. We have about $18,600 renters in Provo. And so 67, it's about 37. I think my numbers may be off a year, but, you know, close to that. So 30, 35, 37% of the total renters across all of Provo are paying more than 50%. That's pretty scary. Very low income, which is again, that 50% of area meeting income, about $34,000 for a family of four, there's 4,500 of those people that are paying more than 50%. So that's some big numbers.
Does that number represent households or individuals, that 4,500?
I think it's households. Yeah, so multiply by three, so to get the true human impact. So this is, this is mind-boggling to me. I've never seen anything like this, and it is specific to the two universities. But renter-occupied units as a share of total occupied units. So in Provo, almost 60% of the housing is rental. That's scary.
That was my point earlier, that we have the rental housing available, and other cities don't.
Orem has a lot, you know, and has been building more. But yes, Provo does have more, and we can spend a couple hours, and I can tell you why I think that's happened over the years. But, you know, it is where it is right now. It's close to 60%.
So if we bring more low-income housing units, which will be rental units, it doesn't increase that percentage rate?
Well, there needs to be a split between, in the mindset, between students and low-income. Students qualify as low-income, but students are on their way up and out. They're not the true low-income market. And what's happened here in Provo is that they've taken over most of the housing and forced the real low-income people down out on the streets. And so that's a significant problem. So here's a study that was put out. I can't remember this. It was paid for by the city. It's a fair housing study, analysis of impediments. I think it was paid for maybe by the city of Provo. So... Um, and this is for, um... Off-campus rental housing is estimated at thirteen thousand rental units, and that's for both universities. So, in BYU, about twenty-five thousand of the thirty thousand live off-campus. And then, um, UBU, it's about eight thousand, according to this study. You know, that, that to me is just crazy. So, BYU owns or contracts out a thousand units of married student housing, but they have ninety-eight hundred married students enrolled. So, if all of those students are married to each other, you're about thirty-five hundred units short for married student housing. And, you know, and UBU adds to that, um, significantly. I mean, they, they, in talking to them, they say that they, they don't, that they're building a lot of housing for their people, but, you know, all of the studies that I've seen show that they're, they're adding to that. That, to me, as an outsider coming in, is the number one problem in the housing market in Provo.
Is the Provo housing only rented schools?
Um, we do. We don't, we don't have... If, if they qualify, we have to. We have to follow HUD's rules. If they qualify, we have to. And again, we could get into that, you know, I mean, there are things that, that I, I would love to see changed, but that's, that's another story. So, if you look in the, uh, bottom left, you can kinda see, um, you have, um, in low, low-income, you have thirteen thousand six ninety-five renter households, and you have sixteen thousand affordable units, but, you know, some of those units, um, are just not, uh, are not available. And so, if you go down, you look down here, you have, in the next two categories, there's not even close to enough housing. So, if you have, if you're making eighty percent of area median income, you can find housing, a little expensive, and, you know, you can pay, you have the money to pay a little bit more, so you can pay thirty-five, forty percent for housing, and there is housing available. But when you get down into the fifty percent and thirty percent range of area median income, significant housing shortage for those areas. And this is a study that was, um, um, I think it just came out a little bit ago, but basically over the last decade, you've had, um, housing units have outpaced the formation of households. And between twenty-ten and fifteen, that didn't happen. And so, you had a, a twenty-thousand unit, um, negative for households being created and, and housing being built for them. So, solutions. The solutions are expensive. I mean, it, with, with the price of land right now, in, in Provo, unless the land is subsidized or the building is subsidized, you cannot build entry-level housing or low-income housing. So, there has to be some kind of subsidy, uh, whether, whether the, um, city can provide land or some kind of incentives, um, to build entry-level housing. We, we have a significant need for entry-level housing. And that is, that's not even the low-income market. But that takes a lot of pressure off the low-income market if you have a lot more entry-level housing, because if there's no entry level, they're renting. And so, it, it just puts pressure on the market. Uh, inclusionary zoning. It has to happen if you want, if you want this situation to get better. You know, that's the only way that, that developers are gonna put any money into low-income housing. And then strongly encourage the universities to build more housing, to build new housing that they own. And we need a significant amount of units. And they both have land. Yes.
That would primarily be married housing, because I heard they're not even filling up the new ones, uh, that they've built, because people don't. They come home from their missions and they're older and they don't wanna live on campus.
Right. They don't wanna follow the rules, um, to put it bluntly. Yeah, i- it's understandable, but, um, the university controls the money. Um, all of these people have scholarships, they have, there, there are ways for the university to force them to live in that house, 'cause they control the money. So, it, if they wanna solve the issue, they can solve the issue. It's all about money. So, the other things on, on the wish list, um, like to see a, a requirement that landlords have to have fair housing training. Like to see the application fee abolished for rental properties. People who, who are in the lower-income market can't go to five different places and put up a thirty-five or fifty-dollar, um, application fee and not get it back. They just can't do it. And so, that's one way that landlords are excluding low-income people. And then all the other stuff is, you know, it's just things that, things that would help. Um, you know, the, uh, the lead-based paint poisoning prevention, I, I haven't heard anybody in, in Provo talk about that, um, but, you know, you've got a lot of old houses that, that people are buying and they're gutting right now, and they're probably putting maybe even asbestos into the air, but definitely lead-based paint. And you're not doing anything to control that, that I know of. And that is a federal regulation that anybody that is demolishing a house, um, older than nineteen seventy-eight, um, they have to be lead, lead-based paint certified to do any work on the house. And, and they have to make sure that when they disturb that, that they do it in the right way. And that's a federal regulation. And then a rental inspection requirement every two years. Income stream for the city, um, ensures that, uh, you know, that the, the housing stock is, um, is being maintained, and, uh, it gives you a list of everybody that's renting, which would be really nice to have. Yeah.
We do have rental dwelling licensing, but we're not really doing that inspection.
No.
Can you go lobby the state legislature for us?
The state will, they're gonna stay law after doing it once over three years.
Are you really?
And we can't, and we can't charge for it either.
Oh, we can't charge.
Really?
Yeah.
Uh, see, Tennessee was, you know, they, they allow you to do that. So did Iowa. So, you can't do it, but once every?
Once every three years, and there's no revenue.
And you can't charge?
We can only, we can only inspect in order to license them. Once we've licensed them, then we can't inspect again.
Wow. Interesting. Okay. Learned something every time, every day I learn something about Utah, so... Yes?
You mentioned that inclusionary zoning, we talked the other day in Housing Today about this, and, uh, there are some that feel there would be a lot of pushback, and would you like to elaborate on how you feel that would work and, and why it would work? I mean...
There would be a lot of pushback, um, from the developers, because they're gonna not make as much money as they were making before. I mean, that's just the bottom line, is that it, it costs money to take care of this problem. The city can do it, or you can push it out onto some other people and let them handle that. I think anywhere you, you have, um, you have less land to develop and people wanna come in and develop, that, you know, you really need to use that land wisely. And, you know, if you keep allowing things to be built, um, wi- with no affordable housing component, then, you know, it, it, the backlog's gonna grow. The other thing this does is it spreads it out. I mean, one of the problems you've got right now is that you're upset that, that all the low-income housing is, is centered down here around the front-runner. Well, that's, that's where you get money for the tax credits. That's how you get points for the tax credits, and that's how you get money. But if you did inclusionary zoning, anything built anywhere would have to have that component, and then it spreads out to low-income, which is really a good thing, 'cause the concentration is not good.
Senate County is a model of that, too, since they're doing.
Um, you know, any of those, you look at any of the ski areas, Vail, I mean, all of those communities, they, they faced this twenty years ago, and they've really done a good job of getting up to speed and, and, you know, figuring out how to make that work.
So, one of the ways, like Park City is dealing with, uh, they have an inclusionary zoning requirement, and they provide, uh, some, uh, affordable housing, and the mechanism they use is the land trust, where the property stays within the trust and they, uh, sell the home or lease the home over ninety-nine years, and so they're just paying for the home and it becomes affordable.
Right. Right, and, and a lot of that is, is where the, the affordable housing is not where the actual project is being built. They're swapping out land so that, that, but they have to control the land somewhere to be able to put that, um, that into the land trust, that, that investment, whatever their, their percentage is for the inclusionary zoning.
How does the Good Landlord Program help with the affordable housing?
I read through it. Lynell, help me out a little bit.
There's pros and cons of, I'm Lynell Smith, I'm the director of Utah County Housing. And there's pros and cons to the Good Landlord Program. Part of it is that landlords are, they're trained on discrimination, so they're, they're required to not discriminate, as we know. But this helps to educate them so that they're more able to work with this population. They also, uh, in Ogden, there's a lot of controversy, their Good Landlord Program actually excluded felons from living within the city, which is a bad thing. They have to live somewhere. That's where their AP and P officer is, where do they go? So, it provides an inspection, the landlords have to pay a fee to, um, become licensed as a landlord. I don't know how that works with the state legislature, it's working in Ogden, so I don't know what they're doing. What else do they provide there?
And as I understood it, they were providing some incentives for the landlords to, um, to register and be, be part of the program. Something like that. There was some kind of.
Business license credit.
Be, be happy to get that to you as well, if you, if you wanna look at that.
So, Wayne, we looked squarely at, uh...
Yes, we did.
And there's, what was the, the impediments?
So, here's our challenge. The, uh, the, the Good Landlord Program, as it's authorized by state law, lets you calculate a maximum allowable business license fee, and that includes both the regulatory cost of the license, as well as what they call a disproportionate service cost. And so, what we looked at when we did our study was, we looked at, you know, so you, you take rental housing in general, and you take owner-occupant housing in general, and then you look at the disproportionate costs associated with those. So, if there's more policing EMS calls to rentals than there are the single-family homes, then you can, you can use a formula to assess that disproportionate impact on the business license fee. And so, and that's how Ogden, West Valley, and Salt Lake and others have done it, because the disproportionate cost gap is really high in those communities. And so, for, in Ogden, for example, if you qualify for the Good Landlord Program, you can take your business license costs from a couple of hundred dollars a year per unit down to forty dollars a year per unit. And so, a landlord has enormous incentive to sign up and be a good landlord, uh, and agree to use the standard, uh, standard licensing language, and in Ogden's case, not least the felons, and so on. Do background checks and those kinds of things. The dilemma we came up with in Provo is because such a substantial part of our rental housing stock is, is BYU-approved housing, in which every tenant signs the honor code, that their, the disproportionate cost of our public services was relatively small. Instead of a couple of hundred dollars per unit disproportionate cost, it was like ten dollars per unit disproportionate cost. And so, the dilemma was that we couldn't create enough incentive for a landlord to want to give the credit. And so, when it's ten dollars a year, they say, gosh, that's a buck a month in rent, um, I, you know, it's a big hassle to be a good landlord. You gotta go to training, gotta use standardized forms, you, you know, you gotta do these kinds of things. And so, so the response we kept, got back from the landlords, and the landlord association was very ho-hum, you know, yeah, we're not, we're not interested in doing that. So, in some ways, we're kinda the victims of our own success, right? Now, obviously, the further you get away from campus, you get outside the two-mile magic radius for single students living there, um, that those, that disproportionate cost goes up. The dilemma is that we can't distinguish by, by geography, we can't distinguish by whether you're honor code or not. The statute only allows us to distinguish between owner-occupied and rentals, and you can't distinguish among rentals, so you can have a different disproportionate cost for duplexes versus sixplexes, for example. But you can't distinguish based on some of these other categories. And so, so we, we spent a lot of time and energy about, five or six years ago, looking at Good Landlord, and came to the conclusion that, that there wasn't, there wasn't a significant enough incentive to encourage landlords to do what we're doing. So, instead, we kinda took the approach of working with the community policing operation, and so we, you know, we meet with landlord groups, we, you know, we go, every year, we go to the BYU Housing, uh, you know, uh, conference, uh, where they meet with all the contracted housing organizations, and we do a presentation about, you know, how to, how to reduce crime in the, you know, in these, in these areas, things about, you know, crime prevention through environmental design, and some of these other tools that we kinda talked about. That's been kinda the only approach we, we've taken there. So, again, it's a, it's a really hard nut to crack, and, and again, to, to get a big enough problem, it creates more community problems than the Good Landlord Program is all, organized all. That's kind of our, that's the dilemma which we're confronting.
Thanks. Again, a, a unique situation.
Yeah, totally unique situation.
Yes.
I think an, an alternative to that Good Land, Landlord Program would be having a good landlord number on file. So, if you have an issue with this tenant, you can put pressure on that landlord, you know who it is to contact him.
Yeah. And again, we do, we do rental dwelling licenses, so we do, and we require as part of a rental dwelling license, that every landlord, no matter where they live, has a local agent that's, that's headquartered in Utah County. And so, even if they're from California, they're a condo owner, and they're renting one condo, they still have to have rental dwelling license and have a local property manager. So, that's given us the opportunity then to make those kinds of connections, and I think that database has, has been really valuable, and it's been helping in a whole lot of ways. Again, it's not complete, we don't always know. Sometimes a renter pops into somebody's basement, nobody tells us, and they don't come to get a rental dwelling license, and so, again, we confront some of those kinda challenges, but, uh, but again, I think we have a fairly good database that could help us resolve those kinds of concerns.
Any other questions?
We'd love to see some significant state law changes. I think we've just always run up against the Realtor landlord lobby, um, which is, which is a fairly, fairly significant.
Private property rights lobby here is?
Private Property Rights Coalition is a, is a group that is pretty, pretty significant.
Yeah. Any other questions?
We have ready source for letters, and appreciate them all being here. I just wondered, um, if there were any other suggestions of how the city can partner in, um, addressing the issue. I think it's gonna take everybody. You're already in the trenches, but, um, are there other, does anybody else have, you know, ideas? Is this a, a pretty good list to start with, as far as the city's concerned, or are there other things that you have seen in your practice, everyday practice, that the city could do, that's in our purview, that, that would be helpful in addressing homelessness, the affordable housing, something that we're not already doing?
Well, kind of on the same lines as the, uh, Bush, Bush, Aaron, Saul, you answer yourself.
Oh, I'm kind of at, because I'm an executive director of the Public Health and Community in County, here in Utah County. A couple of sugge-
A couple of suggestions that senators have given me over time. One was, you know, giving density bonuses to developers that are willing to provide affordable land to nonprofit developers. So, you know, say, you know, a developer comes in, wants to do a project, you give them greater density, and they give land to an affordable, someone like Housat or South House or something like that. The other thing, this was the mayor of Payson, a long time ago, gave me this idea, and it's not the same mayor, but it was a, where in order to kind of clean up downtowns, where you have developers that are building, you give them density bonuses, and they buy a home in the downtown and give that to nonprofit corporation or organization, and they renovate that home and sell it to a family. So that's another couple of ideas that have been brought to me over the years in kind of when inclusionary zoning, but in a little bit different way. So those are some ideas.
Karen McCullough. I'm Karen McCullough, and I'm the executive director of Community Action Services in Preve. While this does not apply directly to the housing issue, it is something that we do, or we can really ramp up at our agency, is we provide classes for renters. What we find in our experience is that a landlord has two people who are equally qualified, so to speak, they don't discriminate, and you could probably, others can talk about discrimination issues, but sometimes people, landlords are not comfortable renting to some types of people, frankly. And so what we are doing is looking at providing a class to teach people how to be good renters. And hopefully, that will help encourage landlords to take a look at a broad variety of individuals in state.
Are you providing a certificate when they graduate to give to the landlord? Is that kind of...
Yeah, we do that. Plus, we're looking at providing a financial incentive for them to attend a class as well.
Awesome.
I know one thing we've talked about is looking at different housing types that have not been in our market. So we've talked about things like pocket neighborhoods. And I know there's been a real push around the whole tiny home concept. And again, our zoning, as it currently stands, generally wouldn't allow tiny homes. It also generally wouldn't allow pocket neighborhoods. We need to come up with a zoning classification for that. And again, the pocket neighborhoods would run into a little bit of resistance from surrounding single-family neighborhoods because of the pocket neighborhood concept. It's just a little bit innovative, but that's a way to get those numbers under 200,000 and create more of that kind of housing stock. And so again, there are probably some things we could do to creatively look at our zoning ordinance and open some opportunities for some owner-occupied or even renter-occupied, but do those at a, you know, in a home, where it could be done at a significantly lower cost than the nutrition of a single-family home on an eight-thousand-square yard lot.
What's the city's attitude towards that?
Well, again, we haven't really talked about it, unless the Housing Committee, we do have a Hohok Housing Committee, it's been working, composing members of the council and other providers. And I don't know if they've gotten quite to that point, but that's been one area that I know we've kind of bounced around. We tried a pocket neighborhood and kind of ran headlong into pitchforks and torches.
And we spent some significant time and effort.
Yes, we did, yeah. So I think we could do a pocket neighborhood, we've just got to find the right spot and try to do them. But I think those kinds of alternatives have a lot of potential.
One of the other areas I think that would be helpful in developing some of the smaller one-off projects where you're building a house or two houses would be impact fees. Because one way to significantly reduce the cost of building is to reduce the impact fees, and that would make a house more affordable as well.
Yeah. Again, that would be great to have some statutory authorization to do that. Right now, we don't have that. And again, some cities have played with it, but they run, again, headlong into that same lobby of folks who say, well, if you do it for one, you've got to do it for all. And so we've, you know, our practice has been, when we've made a decision to do some kind of impact fee waiver, what we've actually done is use general fund dollars to pay the impact fee to ourselves. And so it's been a budget implication for us. But those kinds of things, you know, again, it would be great if we had legislative authorization to reduce impact fees for affordable housing. Right now, we don't.
Okay. Sounds like we need to get our pitchforks and go up to the state.
We need to find some friendly legislators.
They can defer it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. We've done that on occasion, too. We've utilized, for example, a tax increment project. We've allowed the tax increment to pay the impact fee over time. And so, and we've used tax increment as a revenue source for that. And so, yeah, there are some of those kind of creative things. But again, at the end of the day, they got to be paid.
Right.
Unless we can figure some specific authorization to do it.
Robert, kind of along the inclusionary zoning, is a housing trust fund. If they can't dedicate ten, fifteen percent of their units to affordable housing, can they pay a fee, a percentage of the project fee, towards an affordable housing fund? Where then affordable housing developers can apply for those funds to pay for impact fees or something of this sort?
It's less educated, is that?
Then we have students move into it.
That's much easier.
No, you're exactly right.
Exactly. You do this, and it just creates more student housing, affordable student housing. It doesn't really attack the problem of those that aren't students that can't afford housing. I don't know how we solve that issue, but it's...
The Prey to Homes this week, they're until Saturday, Balmarts and Homes have built modular homes, mostly out of state. But they're, they've got a sled home in Orem. It's, I actually just went and looked at this morning. And so if you're interested in what it actually looks like outside of watching Home and Garden TV or whatever, TLC or whatever the channel is. The Tiny Home. It's about five, five hundred square feet, I think. It's got a little bit of a loft in it, but...
Kind of nice, too, because it's mostly windows on one side, it's got an open feel. And I don't know if the landscaping on the outside is real or not for the pictures.
No, they just did temporary because they're only there till Saturday. They're going to replace it with a big home.
Right. I thought it was very lovely. You know, but yeah, I'd plan to go see that.
It has to be an idea of thinking outside the box, you know, these other type of homes in the communities that we got in Austin. Just one city that recently asked for an accessory apartment.
In fact, if you look at what they're doing in the Bay Area, it's just 180 degrees from where we've been, where accessory apartments are mandated in new housing construction in San Francisco. So if you build a new home, you must build an accessory apartment for it. And that's, again, that's 180 degrees from historically where Provo's been, trying to get accessory apartments out of traditional single-family neighborhoods. And that's a, and it's a pretty dramatic shift even for the Bay Area.
I think collectively, what we're trying to do is provide some incentive and some hope and some mobility to a clientele that when they see these numbers, you know, they just, they don't feel a part of the community. And then it becomes problematic. I don't know if I mentioned in my presentation, but we used to have a longtime homeless gentleman, and I'm obviously talking from the homeless side and not the history of the low-income side, but we had a gentleman by the name of Dennis. For ten years, it was a longtime chronic homeless individual that almost had daily interaction with law enforcement. Once he got in, got mental health treatment, got proper medication, was in a service-rich environment, was put back into the community in his own housing with not one police interaction in three years. So that's what we're talking about. That's the societal benefit to our collective work here, is we've got to find a way to provide hope for people to move up the ladder. And for some of our people, it's got to start lower down a little bit than what most of us started.
We cause pressure on the housing rent market is the students.
And BYU, and you've, guess what that does? That alleviates and provides, opens up those units.
I told you why you guys are responsible for this.
That's right.
In some ways, though, they are those people that we're talking about, too. Students are those people, right? And I think, you know, they're part of it. They can't just say they're not allowed, but...
Well, no, but they're on a different path.
There are other options for them that aren't available for some of the most severe cases.
The other thing that's, I'm sorry, the other thing that's changed has been, and candidly, it's been the impact of missionary age change in Provo. Because now what we're seeing is a lot, a lot of people coming back for missions and getting married relatively quickly. Usually, those kids were single students for two or three years before they got married, and now they're coming back and getting married earlier. And so what you're finding now is a real shortage of married student housing and a real glut of single student housing. And it's, you know, it's a, and it's a thing that takes years to change the housing stock, right? That's something you can't done in a year or two. And so again, I think it's, and not that it's a temporary problem, I think it's a permanent problem, but it's one that, you know, we, again, whether it's BYU building new units of student housing, or we try to figure out a way to convert some single-student housing to married-student housing, or, and again, that changes the entire economics of the whole picture. But I think that's, I think that's a real legitimate problem that we didn't anticipate or foresee as that's happening now. So I think we're seeing lots more of people coming home and getting married, you know, within a year of their mission rather than within two or three years of their mission.
Mr. Vernon, we really appreciate you coming today and all of those who've come with you. We need to move on to a closed session, but can we rely on our Housing Committee to digest what we've talked about today and come up with some ideas for next episode? That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yes, so we do have topics proposed for a closed session. They do all the statutory requirements regarding strategy sessions for litigation or sale of property. So it would be appropriate to have a closed session this time. So we'd love your question. We have a motion for Mr. Stewart to close the session. Do we have a second?
You have the second.
For Miss Santiago?
Yeah, I just want to...
Well, I know the question to go into question.
So I think we have, we need five more minutes.
Yeah, you're fine. I saw all the councilors that came to the meeting.
So Mr. Stewart, Mr. Stewart.
You have two hours.
So we'll turn to the other room.